You're watching Titusville City TV. Stay tuned for the Titusville City Council Meeting.
We are waiting for everyone to get back into our seats here, so hold on TV. Hold on, okay. Yes, guys spread out a little bit if you want. We're on hold just a second here. All right, welcome to the 5:30 PM, May 10th City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum. I'm sorry, it's actually 7:40. So, welcome to the 7:40 City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far.
Thank you. Clerk, would you read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address the issue. And citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items. All sign-up cards and exhibits must be submitted to the city council show- well, sorry. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council.
Thank you very much. Do I have a- do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2022, 6:30 PM, March 22nd, 2022, 5:30 PM? I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations.
We have none, sir, but good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Before we get started with the meeting this evening, at the request of an applicant for 9E, which is SSA 1, 2021, that that particular item be tabled to 14 June 22.
Do I have a motion to table 9E?
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion to table 9E, a second roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah. 9E, is that correct, 9E?
That's correct.
9E is tabled.
Is that into June 14th, 2022?
To June 14th. With that said, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I appreciate everybody coming prepared. That's how these things go. Sometimes the applicant has the right to do that. And actually, I believe I heard the applicant say that at the last meeting, for the lawyer to be here. But with that, I do want to say, I mean, here you guys all are. I appreciate you being here. Applicant, I certainly appreciate you being here and your right to do that. So, say that again. Why don't you say- I'm a little confused.
I just want to clarify something because I don't want them to waste their time. Since it's being tabled, do we have a discussion about it?
There is no agenda item.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
And that's the point. I want to clarify that you're sitting here, but there's no agenda item.
Yeah, when it gets tabled, that means it's off the agenda. It's not really off the agenda. It's tabled on the agenda. It's not going to be heard tonight. And so that's what you're trying to say.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
And I would like to clarify, 9E is Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 1, 2021, Windover. That is item 9E.
And that's where we're at. So, quite honestly, again, if you guys- no, no, and so, listen, because some of you, some of you might be concerned, oh, we leave and they might bring it back up. Promise you that's not going to happen. It won't happen until June 14th.
Right now, the- yes, sir.
June 14th.
That's a date certain. That could change as well.
And that's ba- okay, I'll leave it at that. No vote, no discussion. We won't even hear it. I'll just leave it at that. So with that, let's take a five-minute recess.
Certain council, we are on item 6A, which is the Historic Preservation Board. Accept the resignation of alternate member Jean Carmona Collins from the Historic Preservation Board. The resignation was effective 25 April 22. Additionally, appoint one alternate member to the Historic Preservation Board with an unexpired term to expire on 31 October 22. There's currently one application for this vacancy for the alternate member with a term to expire on 31 October 22. There's also currently one application on file. Mr. Kirk Davis has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
All right. I don't see any council members to speak at this point. I do like, before we move forward to accepting the resignation, I do like the application of Mr. Kirk Davis. But let's do one thing at a time here. So, there we go. Member Nelson?
Mayor Diesel, we have two cards.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we can, we can still talk.
Well, I was going to make a motion to accept the resignation of Jean Carmona Collins with regrets. She has served faithfully, and I liked her. I liked her when she, she came up here.
I remember, remember that.
So, heavy heart, but I would move to accept her resignation.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Vice Mayor. We will hold on those and call the cards.
We have the applicant Kurt Davis.
Here, hold on one second. Go ahead and sit in the front row, though. Sit in the front row, because you're such a studious guy. You put a card in. You don't have to do that when you're the applicant. Is there another card?
Tony Shuffalo.
Okay, Tony.
Tony Shuffalo, the historic Norwood House, 715 Tropic Street. I had wanted to speak after you had heard from Mr. Davis. I am an alternate on the Historic Preservation Board. And in the three years I've been there, I've only missed one meeting on purpose and one accidentally. So, two times out of three years isn't so bad as an alternate, I think. And I do appreciate that the Historic Preservation Board listens to my opinions and makes me feel an honored and important member of that organization. I'm sorry it didn't work out for the other alternate member. I think it's very fortuitous, however, that Mr. Davis' application has come up, and I would urge you to please put him on our board, because this man has a wealth of historic information, especially considering that the Historic Preservation Board is working, the three years I've been there, we're working on a project to identify, research, identify, and make a cohesive presentation throughout the area, West Titusville, former Joinerville, the African-American business and residential community that is right here on the other side of, guess what, on the other side of the railroad tracks. My goodness, how stereotypical is that? Of course, I live on the other side of the railroad tracks also, and I just wanted to say that the Historic Preservation Board is having our annual workshop, this being, the month of May, being Historic Preservation National Month, or National Historic Preservation Month, the month of May. We're having our annual workshop on Thursday, the 19th, and I'd like to invite everybody to come, because we are considering how to get buildings and residences onto the Historic Preservation listing for Titusville, not necessarily for the National Historic. That's going to be Thursday, May 19th, 5:30 meet and greet. Refreshments, we're going to have refreshments, always important. First feed the face, then teach right from wrong, Bertold Breck. So, I'd like to invite everybody to come to the Historic Preservation Board Workshop on Thursday, May 19th. And I'm sure hoping Mr. Davis will be installed on our board and will be an active member and be there for that, because the Joinerville Project is something we've been working on for a long time and want to see come to fruition. And he has a lot of information and knowledge that will be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Okay, Mr. Davis. Very impressive, as I said even to start this, very, very impressive application. Awesome.
Well, good afternoon or good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kirk A. Davis. I'm a resident of Titusville. I'm a graduate of Titusville High School, in fact. I've been a resident of Titusville over 40 years. I'm a retired commander of the United States Coast Guard, where I served for 25 years. That sounds good. And I want to thank you for considering my application for the Bavard County Historical Commission. Just a little bit about me. History is a passion of mine, and especially the local history. And since I've moved back, I've had some time on my hands to indulge and some research. I was very lucky to be able to come into the acquaintance of Alex Haley, the Alex Haley that wrote the book Roots and the Autobiography of Malcolm X. And he left a grand impression on me. And to that point, I forged ahead. I became a member of the Historical Society Museum of North Bavard. I'm also a member of the Genealogical Society of North Bavard. And I was able to donate historical journals on black high school reunions to the library. So, they're in the genealogical section of the Titusville Library, where, you know, you can go in and research and find that information. There is very valuable, a lot of historical data there. I'm also a member of the Oak Ridge Cemetery Board of Trustees. That's the oldest black cemetery here in the city of Titusville. I'm the adopted great-grandson of William Henry Maxwell. He was one of the first black pioneers here in Titusville. He arrived here in 1880. And by chance, during my research, I came across his story in the Slave Narratives, 1936, 1938. And it's located in the Library of Congress, and as well as some census information. I was able to describe and discover some of my own family information. I participated in the Titusville 150th Anniversary and provided, like Tony mentioned, some information about the black community that I was able to discover and share. And I was able to post a blog. The blog is still there. It's the 150th Anniversary of Titusville, and it has all these historic pioneers of Titusville, their personal stories, their contributions and whatnot. And I was able to add to that for the African-American community here in Titusville. So, I invite you to look at that and give it a study. I'm a member of the group of-
Can you, two more minutes?
Sure.
Can I have two more minutes on motion?
Well, I got, give me two more minutes. I'm good. Or less. I'm also a member of the Concerned Citizens Group here in Titusville's black community. And I created what I call the Giftsonian Archive, which is an online platform in honor of Andrew Jackson Gibson, who was also an early pioneer here in Titusville. And this is to provide a historical record of our black community and other research materials. And as the owner of Davis Memorial Cemetery, I've established over 800 online legacy memorials through ancestry.com and Find the Grave, in order that future generations can always reflect back on their descendants. It tells them about their, their life's contributions and gives a little insight on their life as well. And I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you. Thank you.
That is amazing. You certainly are the guy to be on the Historical Society thing. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't mind getting with you and taking a tour of all the stuff that you know here that I don't.
You probably don't remember this, but I was at THS, and I asked you to get access to Dorothy Wise's building. You rode in a little go-kart. You probably don't remember that. It was such a while ago.
You never know what difference you're making. It makes you we didn't wreck.
I remember you being able to spend the time with me with that.
Well, I appreciate that.
And one last thing, and I'm done. The Indian River Journal, it has a story about William Henry Maxwell and his contribution to the citrus industry. He was also put up as a nominee for the citrus industry, Florida citrus industry Hall of Fame about a year or so ago. So, I invite everybody to get a confidence where you can find it pretty much all along the time. Just take a chance to take a look at that and learn about him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. Yes, sir. All right, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I wanted to let you know, sir, can you hear me? Hello? I'm talking to you. You mentioned something, and it brought some memory back to me. You mentioned Alex Haley. And when the movie Roots came out, guess who was in it? Me. Yeah. In 1976, I was going to, of course, a predominantly black college, Savannah State College, and they actually came and asked for some of us to be part of that. And I actually was a slave on a ship.
I did not know that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I know. Anybody want my autograph?
I didn't say that. I said I didn't know that.
But you just, well, you just never know, you know?
Fantastic. Oh, that's fascinating.
Yeah, I'm a fascinating guy.
You notice I didn't say that. I said that was fascinating. You notice I didn't say that, I said that was fascinating. Hey, hit the motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Mr. Kirk Davis to the Historical Commission.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a... We did, didn't we? Oh, we held on that.
Can we do both of them at the same time?
No, but go ahead and make your second. Okay, I have a motion and a second there. Let's go to the first motion. Yeah, I guess, do we need to read that, or we can understand that that's accepting the resignation?
Accepting the resignation.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we accept the resignation of alternate member Jean Aramana, am I right, Collins of the Historic Preservation.
I would second it, but we've already done it.
So, yeah, she made that motion. So we have that motion, you seconded it.
I second it, okay.
All right, let's go ahead, roll call vote to eliminate that confusion.
Okay.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
That vote was to accept the resignation, and now to accept Mr. Davis under the board. Motion, we had the motion, we got the second, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan. Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson. Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Davis, I look very much forward to the things you teach us. City Manager.
Your next item is number seven, which is petitions and requests from the public.
And we'll have petitions and requests from the public. I see none.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, resident of Titusville. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Cook and Public Works Department, because within the last two months, I have seen them on Riverside Drive and Indian River Avenue with their street sweepers sweeping up all those oak leaves before they go out in the river. And I think that's a very positive thing, and hope it's kept up. Secondly, the clarity of the Indian River is good right at the moment, which is a good thing. Unfortunately, there's no seagrass. And for the first time in 50 years of going up and down the Indian River and through Hollow River Canal, I did not see one, one manatee. First time in 50 years, I have not seen that. What's going to happen this summer, I really don't know. But with all the runoff and fertilizers, et cetera, let's hope we don't have a repeat of past years. My wife and I, together with two other residents of Titusville, are participating in the zoo's clam project. And it's coming along very well. Once a week, we do monitor the salinity. Hopefully, that doesn't get real bad during the summertime, which it probably will. And they came out recently and checked our clams, our super clams, what they call them, are doing very well. And I'm certainly happy to see that. In addition, I would respectfully request, we'd love to participate in planting seagrass. And if the city could do something to help us as residents, we would be happy to participate in that. The last thing is the November 18th letter that I have delivered to City Hall and delivered to the City Manager, City Attorney, and Community Development Director. And on behalf of my wife and attorney John Evans and his wife, we just simply ask if there is an application coming before the council concerning amendment to the development agreement that we'd be notified. I have never in six months received a response to this request. I did speak with Mr. Boome about two months ago and advised him, what should I do? Should I appear back before council and ask? And I'm here today, because I have not received a response. Your response could simply be, no. At least that's a response. I realize it could fall through the cracks, et cetera. But I think that is my petition or request. And I'm going to tell Mr. Evans whether or not we're on the list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Attorney, you want to add to that, since he noted?
No, I believe Peggy responded that she had received his request. As far as Mr. Severs knows, it may be a year, maybe two years. I don't think we can guarantee that someone who's not... To receive notice per our guidelines is guaranteed that somebody's going to remember that request. I certainly can ask Peggy if they have a way of saying, hey, we heard you. We'll make every effort. It's just sometimes you can't guarantee someone will receive notice if it's not in the required notice to be provided. Because that could be next week, next month, next year, four years from now. I think that's the concern is.
I got you.
An obligation to provide notice, but certainly Peggy could speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, I explained to Mr. Boome, I didn't always asking courtesy request. If someone forgot, that's fine. And I realize things slip through the cracks. But I do expect, as a courtesy, a response. Response I received from Peggy was, quote, "I am confirming with you that I received my copy of your letter of November 18th." I didn't answer the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. City Attorney. Um, Member Robinson.
Can I add?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Member Nelson.
This is from Mr. Severs. I listened to a presentation by a guy from St. John's Water Management by the name of Chuck Jacoby, am I right? Okay. And what he was saying to the people for the Oversight Committee was that the river is getting cleaner. It would still be a couple of years before we got seagrass, which gave me some hope that at some point, we're going to see some seagrass. I seem to know what he was talking about. So hopefully, he's right.
I agree, hopefully.
Hopefully, thank you. Oh, petitions or requests?
Good evening, Stan Johnson again. And I'm looking forward, and I'll help pay for these seagrass seedlings or whatever. And I want to see Dwight Severs planting them. I'm teasing, I know, no, really, I would like to see some, some... As you know, this right to clean water is important. And there's a petition going out that I'd like to, I think it's a wonderful thing if we can, if the public can be considered a partner in getting the water to be cleaned. Because the government doesn't seem to be following through on their responsibility to get this river cleaned up. I'm here again because of misinformation and disinformation and the city's failure to respond. In this case, is what I did is, as a registered professional engineer and a registered engineer, inactive license, registered surveyor, excuse me, is that I discovered this fake survey done by a surveyor out of town. And I notified him and so forth, contacted him, he didn't correct it. He still hasn't corrected it. In fact, is the monument for him to shoot on is still under pavement. And it's the project SNJ Oaks. It's a, it's a, about a three-acre project, over $10 million, 28 townhomes. And it has a fake survey. I'm not saying it's an erroneous survey, it's a fake survey. In other words, the angle that he put on his, his, his survey was, is, is just made up. He didn't measure the angle. I know that because the, the city has measured it. I've talked to the city, the county, a person who was a former county surveyor, former city surveyor, and he said that what happened in about the 19, into the 1940s, the surveyor who did the plat, the existing plat, was not feeling very well, and he reversed the digits. Instead of 89 degrees and 04 minutes, he, and 40 minutes, he wrote 89 degrees, 40 minutes. He reversed the 4 and 0, 40 minus 4 is equal to 36. The sine of 36 is 0.010. The survey is off 1%. It should be close to be off 1, instead of 1 in 100, it should be close to be like 1 in 7500. The problem is, is the city manager's doing nothing about it. I've contacted again and again and again, nothing. So what's going to happen, what I'm saying to, what's going to happen? When it's, the project is going to be sold, what are you going to tell the new owner? What is the mayor going to tell him? What's anybody going to tell the new owner? What are you going to tell the new owner? When he finds out the survey is wrong for his project? What's he have to do, the whole thing over again?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for petitions or requests at this time? Oh, we got, we got double trouble.
Hi, I'm Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And I am the Chair of the Titusville Environmental Commission, whose primary responsibility is to study general environmental conditions in and surrounding the city and to make recommendations to you guys, the City Council, regarding the environmental effects of existing conditions, future public and private projects, and subjects of environmental concern or interest. Right now, we meet once a month for two hours. And you guys know how many environmental issues come before y'all that never go in front of the Environmental Commission. Sometimes they go in front of P&amp;Z before they reach y'all, but they're not coming in front of us. So I'm here, you have a really good group of people on that board that are donating their time unpaid, you know, to review what is fed to us. But then we end up, you know, like Brookshire tonight, this homeowners agreement, which I believe has some real issues, that never came in front of us. And it concerns the Titusville well field. And now, you know, we're looking at the concrete recycling plant, and it's being thrown back at us. Well, it should have come to us in the first place. We could have saved you guys a lot of time, and we could have made a recommendation to you guys in the first place. So I'm here to ask if you would consider allowing the Titusville Environmental Commission meeting to happen twice a month. And that way, we would be able to have twice as much time to be able to talk about environmental concerns. The city is growing rapidly. I welcome that growth, I think it's great. But, you know, there are some problems. And, you know, there's just simply not enough time in the month to deal with everything. Poor Rachel is trying, it's like herding cats, trying to, you know, push everything on our agenda through. We don't have time to discuss stuff adequately. And I'm asking you to consider allowing the Titusville Environmental Commission to be allowed to meet twice a month and to have more issues that you see might be problematic to come to us before these things explode in front of you guys. Thank you.
Hold still, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I need some clarification, and it will benefit your commission, because I've heard this many times, and it makes me feel bad if we're not following the process. And so, even though you use the words "should have" come before us. So my question to the City Attorney is, what is the process of what goes before commission? Because just because the commission may think it should come before it, there may not be a requirement for it to come before it. So I think we just need to have clarification, because it did come up with the concrete, and then it was pushed back. But the question is, was it pushed back because the Environmental Commission just said, hey, that should have come before us? Or was there really a requirement that we supposed to have it go there before it comes to us?
Certainly, and I believe Ms. Thompson's reading from the goals.
I'm reading straight off your website.
And then under that, it talks about the process. And certainly, and I believe with the concrete, if there's an issue for a project, whether it be private or public, that is going to have environmental concerns and council wants that feedback, they certainly have a right to send that. And that happened with your last item. I think this council said, we want to understand the TEC's recommendations on this project, because it may have some environmental concerns that you heard at that meeting. This council said, go back. Certainly, planning and zoning can ask for input from TEC. I do not have all those guidelines in front of me. I'll provide a copy of that to each of you, if you would like to clarify that. But in my opinion, yes, any project that this council wants input on from TEC, you can send it to them. TEC can evaluate the city and impacts to the environment and provide those reports to you. Planning and zoning, certainly if they want input, can provide that. And I believe you have two members on your planning board that are part of TEC as well. But that's generally how TEC is operated. They have projects that they do reports to you on items of environmental concern, whether that be the lagoon or trees or otherwise. Or, as I said, P&amp;Z has said we'd like some input, or council has said, we want TEC's input. That's currently how that has operated.
Because, you know, it seems like the process is a little squirrely. And I certainly would like for us, before we even get it, if there is some kind of environmental issue, that it does go there before we even see it. So there won't even be a discussion, and certainly don't want to hear. Why didn't you all let us look at the thing?
Sure, sure. So if council is considering amending times as requested or clarifying those policies, and you want that, by that direction, we'd be glad to bring that to you.
I would suggest that we do.
Vice Mayor, I would say, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think you missed that meeting, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. No, 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 no. But the reason I'm saying that is that what you just asked right there, I asked during the meeting. The exact same thing, and really pretty much got the same response. And I'm still not exactly sure how, because some things do go to TEC first before we even see it on the agenda. And then this past case is when I found out the same thing you just said to Vice Mayor. I'm not being negative here, I'm just saying that I didn't know until you'd said that, that we can decide that we want to toss it to TEC, which we did with that, which I thought was a wise move at that time. I still think it was a wise move. But I also still have a little, I think the word squirrely is accurate. I'm still a little confused about when do they get it from staff and what dictates that it goes to staff, from staff to TEC, something, before it comes to us? And what issues don't go to them first? But I do now know that if we see something that we're just not sure about, and we feel like it's a TEC thing, we found out a couple of weeks ago that we can move it that direction. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm watching, so wow, that's, you know, that's kind of the replay. And again, I still would like what you said, what dictates? And I think you had read something that night that said, this goes there and this doesn't go there. So I think there is something in writing that says what goes to TEC and what doesn't. But I do like the fact that we can toss something to TEC if it comes to us and we're like, we need to know more from TEC on this.
I think, you know, the challenge we have is, I honestly don't like when we are reactionary. You know, I certainly would like...
Yeah, but we have to be if we don't know in advance. Because if they send it to TEC first, I'm good. But if they don't, then I should have the right to...
Right, that's my whole point. I like flow charts. It would be so much easier if we had a flow chart to say, okay, if this is going to happen, then it goes over here, it goes over there. I don't like the fact, because you all are there to help us to make the right decision. I would rather know that, yeah, this is going to go to the environmental before we even see the thing. So there won't be a long discussion, you all chastising us for not doing it, and then we send it over, because in our minds, yeah, you're right, we should have sent it.
Yeah, well, it's delaying projects to begin with. And the TEC, we would like some guidance on what we're supposed to be doing. Because if you look at this language, it says, environmental effects of existing conditions, future public and private projects, and subjects of environmental concern or interest. So we don't know who's deciding what comes before us. And, you know, and then we end up with these train wrecks when you guys get run over by torches, you know, and pitchfork mobs that might have possibly been avoided had the TEC looked at the items before you guys get run over.
Let me move to Member Nelson if I could.
I have to agree, I think we need some clarification about what goes to TEC. And it sounds like, basically, we need to have two meetings a month. And we need to at least give you that option of not look. I'd rather have you see it and say, no, there's no problem, you know, keep going. Then not look at it and have it blow up like it did two weeks ago. I just sort of felt like we... I just sort of felt like we didn't have the information we needed.
You didn't.
And that just sort of, I don't know. The more I thought about them, the less I felt comfortable with. So I think, thank you.
If I could. Right now, we have two meetings a month on Wednesdays of P and Z.
Okay.
We have one meeting a month at TEC on a Wednesday. And we have one meeting a month at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. That's four Wednesdays a month.
Okay.
As you can see, we've run out of Wednesdays.
There's always Thursdays.
Well, we have, we have one staff member who goes to these meetings and takes minutes. The other issue is, there are two, currently two liaisons on P and Z and TEC. Neither one of those recommended that the concrete recycling come to, go to the TEC. So that, I believe, is part of their role, and it might be part of the discussion to clarify their recommendation and their role as a liaison. So in my understanding that it would be up to the two liaisons, if they identify something at a P and Z meeting that should come to the TEC, then they would recommend at the planning and zoning meeting that the item get kicked back to the TEC before it moves forward to come to you guys? I have no problem with that.
There you go.
That might work.
So that might work.
We're going to have to make sure that the liaisons understand that, you know.
Let me move to Member Stokel.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the timing portion. I don't know, you said the meetings go two hours?
That's all, that's all their schedule.
I'm almost wondering if it would be better for a meeting to go like three hours or four, and to have another night, if that's possible. Or, so just as Peggy said, I think we're out of Wednesdays. And I don't know if everybody would want, that's on the board, would want to meet twice.
I, that would be great, because what happens at the end of the meeting is we keep having to vote to extend the meeting, and vote to extend the meeting. And if we had a three-hour time slot instead of a two-hour, that would help, certainly.
I would be curious about the timing of the issue. I don't like the idea of kicking things back, because I feel like that wastes time and money for everyone. And so I'm thinking, I don't know if the timing of it, if it goes to P and Z, if TEC meets again before like a second reading for us, if that would be enough time. I don't know. That's what I'm thinking in my head. I don't know if that could actually happen feasibly or not, but.
The planning and zoning board happens on the first Wednesday. So if the liaisons identify something, then TEC is the next Wednesday. They could conceivably push it to the TEC.
Do we have any advertisement requirements for TEC? No?
No, we publish the agenda, but we don't advertise in the paper the item going to TEC.
Could they potentially talk about it at that meeting? If it's identified at P and Z a week later?
If it's put on the agenda, sure.
Can it be put on the agenda after?
Yes, we don't publish until after that date.
Okay. All right, so that might work.
Let's try that.
Okay.
That would be good. And then do you need to advertise that you would extend the TEC meetings to three hours? What kind of process does that take?
We need to look at, excuse me, we need to look at the bylaws and see if there's any issues on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Good, good idea. Petitions and requests, good job. No, you're fine. Take your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Council Members, Naira Atiya, Eastwood Court. I am here to petition you to place the right of clean water on the November ballot. The right of clean water to exist, to flow, to be free of pollution, and to provide a healthy habitat. As our elected officials, you have the authority to place this amendment on the ballot as per the city charter. What an opportunity to be remembered for your vote to save a national treasure and to protect it. Our own beloved lagoon is dying. As Mr. Severs said, if you can find a manatee, ask a manatee about the lagoon. Is this not a golden opportunity to stand up rather than stand by? Please stand up or raise your hand if you support the right of clean water. I hope your answer is not that you buy bottled water and that you don't need clean water, which is one of the responses I have received when ballot, when trying to get this ballot, when trying to get the petitions signed. Think about it. The lagoon's waters are also our waters, ours, to be protected, preserved, and hopefully restored to health if we accept to give the lagoon and clean water the rights they deserve. As our elected officials, and we admire and appreciate you and the service that you render this community, as our elected officials, we, your electors, we, your electors, are counting on your courage. History and the lagoon will record the effects of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, petitions or requests? Here you go. No, 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 she's coming up. Thank you. She's tried three times.
Good evening. My name is Mary Vody Hamilton, and I'm a new resident of Titusville, and I'm very nervous.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. In the summer and fall of 2021, I spent months looking for a forever home for when I moved from Pennsylvania to Florida. I visited Cocoa, Jacksonville, Pampa, Orlando, and many in between, and nothing really knocked my socks off. So when my realtor suggested Titusville, I wasn't really expecting much. Titusville, it's such an unassuming name for such a lovely place. A place so special that I immediately said, I have to live here. Titusville, a place that's on a lagoon, a short drive to a national seashore, an estuary, a wildlife refuge, a shoreline peppered with parks, a marina, a downtown playhouse, and a sailing club. A place that, in my experience, my brief experience, neighbors are kind to neighbors, and folks are really welcoming. In that small-town kind of way. In my first week here, I saw dolphins, a manatee, alligators, fish that jump out of the water, pelicans, egrets, herons, crane, ibis, and more. In that first week, I also saw what looked like a beach chair attached to a kite with a propeller on it flying overhead. A rocket launch on my second day. A bunch of people riding surfboards that are attached to kites along the causeway. And I just had to see Beach Thirteen. Maybe you've been here so long that you don't notice how special your city is. If so, I hope my three minutes might allow you to see it through a newcomer's eyes. It's so beautiful. But I recently found out from a crabber that the lagoon was dying, and hence the creatures that depend on it and clean water for life, including us and our city. I was both saddened and determined to help. So I'm here. When I saw that Titusville, when I saw what Titusville did with the federal COVID.
Can you finish in thirty seconds?
I think.
Yeah, you can. No moves, yes, go.
When I saw what they did with the federal COVID Economic Development money, it gave me hope. I was so impressed. You managed to get money to both the people and the businesses that suffered. It was creative and effective. So I know you can finely tune the integration of economic growth, affordability, stability, safety, and stewardship of our natural resources. I know the City Council has the ability to develop a livable, livable city with a robust economy, to plan strategically so that our lagoon, wildlife, families, and business can all thrive here. But I think, from what I've heard, the first step is to put the right to clean water on next meeting's agenda or on the ballot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your words. Very nice. Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Majak, Alpine Lane. I am here, along with others, to talk to you about the right to clean water. You have an opportunity before you with this petition, this amendment to our city charter, to actually do something for our Indian River Lagoon. You can stand up and protect it. You can help to preserve it. You can help in restoration efforts, and you can help in its enhancement, all of which I'm sure the CRA would love to have, an active, healthy lagoon. Everybody this morning or this evening talked about how nice it is to have access to see and witness our lagoon. The fact of the matter is that the City Council requires a four-one vote to move this ballot. The same petition is in the Orange County Charter now. It was voted and approved with eighty-nine percent of the vote in 2020. And let me tell you, no other election in the state of Florida achieved eighty-nine percent of the vote. None, except for the right to clean water in Orange County. So they have it, and they're taking people to task. You have an opportunity before you to give the opportunity, people, Titusville, to allow them to declare the right of clean water as theirs, as a fundamental and indefeasable right, just like the right to free speech. Just like the right, well, all the other rights in the Bill of Rights. That's where this comes from. Interesting thing, we got, we've been endorsed by the Democrats. We've been endorsed by several different political parties, Sierra Club, and now the most recent one I got was from Audubon. And I thought you would appreciate what Audubon had to say. So once you feel comfortable with this amendment and able to see its direct and tangible benefit to the lagoon and its surrounding economies with no cost of implementation, no worry of personal liability, we hope that you'll reach out to the Charter Review Commission at the Brevard County Charter Board and invite them to also put the right to clean water on the Brevard County Charter. We have two amendments that we're working on here. These give you, the government, the city, the ability to take our state to task, who is responsible for the condition of our lagoon right now. It's not what we're doing, it's what they're permitting. And if we don't stand up and say enough is enough, then who will? Who's going to protect our lagoon if not us? If not you?
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Nobody else? All right, city manager.
I sure do. I do. Sorry about that. I was like, hmm, okay. I have read the petition, and I understand the right to clean water, and I agree with it. The language in the petition is not as tight as I would want to see it. There is also a constitutional amendment, and that would actually impact all of Florida. And you can go online, you can pull it up, you can sign it, send it in. I'm not sure what their deadline is. Okay, so they have more time. So to me, that is something that would be more appropriate. The language is tighter, and it basically takes Florida statute, I want to say 401, I'm doing this from memory, and expands out to allow people or organizations that believe that our permit was erroneously issued by Florida Department of Environmental Protection, St. John's Water Management, to challenge those findings and challenge that permit. And it allows for injunctive relief. So I would encourage people to go onto the internet and pull it up. The language is, was written by an attorney. And I always appreciate it when things are written by attorneys. So anyway, I would suggest that you go on, on the internet, look at it and read it. But I think that would, that covers a whole state doesn't one shot. So that's my suggestion.
You good? Petitions or requests?
Tom Perez, three zero two five South Washington Avenue. You know, it's time you stop kicking the can down the road. We want this now. This is for the '22 election. It's obvious that the people want this. Eighty-nine percent of Orange County voted for it. The state effort, the same lawyer that wrote that, wrote this. Okay, and I suspect also was involved with the Orange County petition. This is something we need. And it doesn't take much to realize that this is going to happen eventually. But we need it now. This is your opportunity, okay, to seize the moment for all of us, for you, for this town. Things are going to continue to happen. Things are going to continue to degrade. With this in place, we all have an opportunity to stop things that we don't believe are in our best interest. Okay? Thank you.
Member Robinson?
Yeah. With someone, Tom, would you come back up? Come back up, please. And I see the petition, and I heard what a member, Julie, and said. What does it mean that we can stop it? What is that? Define that for me, please. Because I read this here. And what does that mean?
Well, I think in a broader sense, it provides the people an opportunity actually to work with you, okay, in order to prevent further degradation from obvious things. Okay, in the case, for example, of a Wakaiba, they've actually taken actions against a polluter, okay, of the river. Okay? So it sort of frees up a lot of hands to be able to get involved on all of our behalf. to be able to get involved on all of our behalf. Okay, to protect our environment. Does that answer your question, Joe?
But don't, don't the state, if someone is found as a deliberate polluter, does not the state have already have the right to, uh, to defend against that?
Well, my understanding is, is that a lot of our laws have ways around them. But when you stick something in the Constitution or in the charter, in this case, now it becomes more of a sense of accountability. We have a tool, a legal tool, that we can do something legally. We can sue a polluter.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
You good?
I'm on my way. That's a step forward.
Anybody else, um, Vice Mayor?
May I, may I ask? The reason that I ask that question is because, uh, like, uh, Commander Kurt out there, I, I did a little time in the United States Coast Guard, and I worked pollution for a number of years and know a little bit about, uh, you know, what causes pollution and the laws that have already been put in place. I also know that since 1970, that the waters around the tributaries and rivers and around the United States are much better than they were back, uh, back then. I know that the Indian River had gotten much worse at one point than it is today, and it has came a long way because of some of the rules and the regulations and the things that has been done. And that's why I asked a question. When you have the right to clean water, what does that mean? Because I, I don't, I don't see that defined here very well. And, uh, and I just wanted to know, because when right to clean water alludes to, you know, drinking water, most people think that they got bottled water. I drink city water. My wife drinks bottled water. So, you know, she spends more money on water than I do. And, uh, and you don't understand that if you multiply the, uh, per gallon, what you have to pay for, uh, water, it's almost as outrageous as gasoline today. But when we say right to clean water, I, I want to understand it, I believe in it. I've seen water much worse than what we have in Indian River Lagoon, and I know that it can be better. I would love to see the fish. I, though, but it's going, it's going to take a lot to make that happen. And when you say we have the right to clean water, what does that mean? If I go down and dump 10 gallons of, or 20 gallons of, uh, uh, 9250, which is a type of oil, uh, in the lagoon, what, what, what is this? What happens to me because of this? That's what I want to know. If that happens to me, what happens to me? What happens to me? Can you, you got this? What happens to me? Tell us, tell me that.
Councilman Robinson.
Right.
It's, it's not unlike, um, when a polluter is caught polluting.
Okay.
He can be taken to court, and science can be brought in to show the pollution that was caused by what the polluter has done in a court of law. Today, the water that's been polluted has no standing in a court of law. You can't sue on behalf of the damaged water, for example, or enjoin a partnership like a corporation can. Even a corporation has standing. They're not a physical entity. Water has no standing in court today. By declaring that water has the right to exist, just as it says in the amendment, it has the right to exist, the flow to be free of pollution and to provide a healthy habitat. That's all we're seeking from our waters. And if the state can't maintain it, then the state is the responsible entity for the dirtying and fouling of our waters. As I've said before, it's not a, it's not a single act or a string of individual polluters that are causing the problem. The problem is systemic, and it's throughout the system. It's a death by a thousand cuts. A little bit here, a little bit there, extra stormwater here from this development, extra muck coming through this development because we didn't calculate it before. All these things add up. We're not looking at the cumulative effects of the individual things that we do, nor is DEP, nor is St. John's. Here's an example. What's happening at, at the Cape with that 3,000 gallon a day permit? Why would they need an additional 3,000 gallons when they've already got an eight-acre pond with a 100,000 square foot building and 70,000 square foot parking lot? So 3,000 gallons a day, to put in equivalence, something that we understand at home, it's like a two-inch pump drawing water. You could easily get 3,000 gallons in a well pump. They're putting in an 18-inch diameter pipe for 3,000 gallons a day. Why? Why do they need that? Tell you why. It's in the permit in the bottom. If they overrun their 3,000, they're allowed to push through anything, any overage, all the way straight to the lagoon. And the problem is, it starts out as industrial wastewater, which is a DEP permitting. It instantly becomes stormwater when it falls into the, the stormwater pond. And then it goes out the canal, back into the lagoon, where now DEP is responsible for it again. But because it went through St. John's, the permitting isn't congruent. So we end up with an industrial stormwater from one building that's putting out 3,000 gallons a day. It's a million gallons a year, if you do the math. One building. And we can have 100 or 1,000 out there and no landing development regulations to oversee how all that stormwater is going to be managed? If you take the seven or 8,000 acres that they have to develop and you throw a 70% impervious coverage over it, you're talking about 8 billion gallons in a year's ring.
All right, let's, let's move on from there. You got your answer, I think. You got your answer?
Yes, and, and I wanted that explained. I wanted that that was explained.
All right, uh, Member Jordan, I mean, Vice Mayor Jordan.
It's, it's okay. I, I think we just need to make it, uh, real clear. I, I read this thing, it's the first time I ever read this. And I will tell you that, uh, I have extreme concerns about this, especially, especially when you look at, uh, it says, uh, ready to go. Any resident of Titusville may bring a legal action. Any. Any. That is ridiculous. When you're talking about litigation by anyone who thinks that there is pollution that is called for that is unnatural, that just makes no sense to me. Number one, when you say the right to clean water, I will tell you now, we all know we have very clean water in Titusville. We got some of the best water in Brevard County. Now, don't argue with me. I'm telling you, you, you had your time. What is occurring here is that it's kind of causing people to fear or think that this governmental entity, this council, don't care about clean water. We've got clean water. That the challenge that we, the challenge that we have is the fact that you're trying to mix the Indian River Lagoon with the clean water. You want people to sign a petition to make sure that we have clean water when we do have clean water. The challenge we have is the Indian River Lagoon, which we have a commission that is taking care of the pollutants, and, and it's going to take millions and millions of dollars. What we could have, potentially, easily, is that one person from the Environmental Commission decide that, hey, when we had this spill at the park, that was unnatural. Therefore, any member, any person in Titusville could sue the city of Titusville and say you polluted the water. And we could be in litigation, and everybody's taxes, if they win, based on this, everybody in Titusville's taxes will go up exponentially because we will have to take care of this litigation. This is not something that anybody needs to sign. Because it's misleading, it is not right, and it's not, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think this is the wrong way to do it because your focus really should be on the Indian River Lagoon and not on clean water per se, because we do have clean water. We all decide, we got it up here, either to buy this water in bottles or drink the water out of the fountain from our, our tap, which is very clean water. I actually have a reverse osmosis, and I talk to city, um, uh, staff, and they say, you shouldn't, you don't need that. And I know I don't need it, but it just makes me feel better to have that. As you said, we only have three more meetings. I'm going to be very clear with you. I think you can count that I am not going to vote for the thing. You need it four to one. I'm hearing that other council members have problems with that. So it's not going to be, it's not going to happen, I don't believe. I just want you to understand where I am. I understand what you're trying to do, but I think this is the wrong way of trying to do it, especially when you, your title is right to clean water, when in fact it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone has clean water to drink and bathe. That's where I am.
Thank you. Um, and with that, I was over at City Manager once before, and you're good. So let's move to, um, what are we moving to?
We're on to consent.
Consent agenda.
Yes, uh, Council, are there any questions of staff for Consent Agenda items A through D?
I see none.
Um, Council, are there any, um, uh, A through D that you would like to pull from the consent?
I see none.
Clerk, are there any cards on consent?
Yes, sir. We have one individual that has signed up for four items. And 8B, we have two individuals that have signed up for that in addition.
Okay, with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record. Consent Agenda item 8A, approve the compensation analysis contract, study analysis contract. Consent Agenda item 8B, approve advisability to update the approved tree list in landscaping technical manual. Consent Agenda item 8C, adopt Resolution 11, 2022, extending the deadline for the right-of-way vacation of, uh, number 2 dash 2021 for Algoato Avenue. Consent Agenda item 8D, approve the travel expenses for the Historic Preservation Board member to attend the preservation on, on Main Street Conference.
All right. You're still let up or no? Okay, uh, nothing from Council. Uh, call the card, please.
For item B, we have Tony Shifalo.
Hi, Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. I actually just have a question almost about process on this. I was at the TEC meeting when they were looking over the, um, list of trees and things that are, um, Florida-friendly and native and, and that should be. And it was advised that this palm tree, this particular date palm tree be taken, be removed from the list of approved canopy trees. Well, palm trees don't provide much canopy to begin with, so I can see that. But I'm wondering, um, a, just a quick Google search for me because I was looking over the list and I saw privet. And having lived in Georgia where privet has taken over, I saw that there was three privet types. There was Chinese privet, Florida privet, and Japanese privet. And due to the, um, current, due to the, the, the current not wanting to slam China, I, um, was very distressed when I looked at, Chinese privet was listed as the most invasive privet species. And it's the worst of the invasive privets. And I could find no information on the Florida privet, but I also found that the Japanese privet was the best of the bad privets because it can be contained. And the problem with privet, if you're not familiar with it, is the birds love to eat the berries, and they spread them everywhere. And the privet just grows, and it's a very tough, semi-trunky bush. And so my question is, every time, um, TEC had asked that the list be gone through and all of the invasive and non-Florida-friendly plants be removed. So my question is, are we going to have to come to Council every time about every type of plant on the list to get it removed? Like the privets, for instance. That's, you know, you're talking about a palm, a, a species of palm tree now. And then there's those three species of privet that are on the list. So I think it would be a kind of a tedious process. And I would like to see you, to ask TEC to go over the list and recommend a whole slew of invasive plants be removed.
Yeah, uh, and I see you're saying, I don't have the answer to that, but I would see, does staff have an answer to that?
I do. The TEC made this motion specifically. They have had it on the agenda for at least a month, and I'm guessing it will take several months to go through the rest of the list. They ask us to move this forward. We're doing as we are asked. Thank you, because this one, this particular palm with its susceptibility to the disease is, is kind of urgent to.
I'm glad they're doing that. Thank you, Ms. Busak, for that. All right, next card.
Also for item B, Lauralee Thompson.
Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims. I'm just here to answer questions. Tony went over it. It, it, it's not a shade tree, and it's susceptible to lethal bronzing disease. There are thousands of, of these very expensive palm trees in the St. Petersburg-Tampa area and also the Orlando area that have died from this lethal bronzing disease. We don't want to see it get started in our community. And yes, we are working on narrowing down the list of, um, the Native Plant Society plants to come up with a, a shorter, uh, version and to take the invasives off. So Peggy is correct. We are working on that. It's one of our agenda items for tomorrow night.
Very good. I appreciate that. And I remember, it seems like a couple of months ago now is when you first brought the, uh, palm issue and the disease. So I'm glad we're working on that together. I appreciate it. Any other questions? I see none. Thank you so much. Next card.
Last, um, cards are Stan Johnston for all four items.
It's only four today, Stan.
Thank you. Uh, Stan Johnston, uh, I, I put down especially, uh, the same one that Tony and Lauralee spoke about. And I, but I didn't put approved, I put neutral because I wanted to, I wasn't sure that Lauralee was going to be here. But thank you to Lauralee, especially because, uh, she was told several times that it was impossible to remove this, uh, Sylvester palm in the time that she wanted to get it done. So, uh, especially, uh, she's, she's done a fantastic job and pushed forward and, but she had to do it with, with the help of staff. So, uh, thank you for, for doing this because this, uh, uh, it's an important thing, uh, that has been explained by Lauralee, that this bronzing disease is, is, is serious, and, uh, we need to not plant the Sylvester palm. Uh, 8, 8A is compensation study analysis contract. And, uh, this was mentioned at the last meeting. I know that, uh, Mr. Jordan mentioned that, uh, he wanted to, uh, a, a study of, uh, the compensation for our pollies and that, uh, we need to pay our city manager maybe more money. Uh, back in 2020, he's making about 160,000, whereas in Cocoa, I understand, Mr., uh, the, um, mayor is, the, the city, the city manager's making about 185,000. Uh, so there is a discrepancy there, it looks like, because City Cocoa is only about half the people. But is it, is that really the correct way to, to look at it? Whether it's just comparing cities? Uh, for example, we have a, uh, employee of, uh, of our hospital who's, uh, making over 200,000, over 300, well, over $500,000. And that's Mr. McCarter, and he makes about, uh, in 2020, he was making about $535,000. And, uh, that's a lot of money. And, uh, are we responsible for that? He's a public employee. Yes, we are. In fact, the city of Titusville chooses of the nine, uh, uh, I believe it's nine officers, I can be corrected, uh, nine commissioners, might call them, uh, who are there. We choose three of them, and then we approve three of, three other ones that are, uh, that, uh, county commissioners select. So we have a, we have a lot to do with what's going on at the parish hospital. So, um, uh, when we're looking at, at salary, and what we're responsible for is, is that, uh, I think it's a good idea, uh, that we do this. I'm not against it. But I want us to, to be careful to, uh, um, watch with, uh, some, uh, that we have, we, we have, we're going to have a, certainly a better plan than what Cocoa did recently. I've been told that Cocoa, what they did was, was, uh, the city manager went ahead and gave her, um, uh, raises. did was, was, uh, the city manager went ahead and gave her, um, uh, raises throughout and he didn't even tell the, the, um, city commissioners. And that's what I was told had happened, which I don't know how it happened. So that's all I have for that. The, the remaining two, eight C and eight D, um, I think they're fine. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card? Okay. Uh, ready to take a motion on the consent agenda?
All right, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I move that we approve consent agenda items eight, eight A through eight D.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a second by Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. City manager. Oh, my bad. That's what happens when you'll have four consent agenda items. I'm sitting here looking at the agenda. I didn't know you're not there.
And, and sometimes you have to use the restroom. Uh, onto, uh, nine A.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is the, uh, ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-two, car rental agencies in the downtown sub-district. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
And this is the public hearing on this ordinance. Ordinance fourteen, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to permit car rental agencies as a limited use in downtown mixed-use district, DMU, midtown sub-district, by amending sections twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table and twenty-eight dash one oh seven car rental agencies, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This item was tabled at the twenty-six April twenty twenty-two meeting to receive the recommendations from the CRA, which was presented at city council meeting, to, to the city council meeting. Planning and zoning commission considered the ordinance on six April twenty-two and unanimously recommended approval, striking the prohibition for recreational vehicles. In August twenty twenty-one, city council directed staff to review section twenty-eight one zero seven, requiring rental car agencies as a conditional use in the midtown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use district. In response to council's request that staff reconsider the need for a conditional use in the midtown sub-district, staff has developed an ordinance establishing car rental agencies as a limited use. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions and this is the public hearing for this ordinance.
Ms. Busaka.
The only addition that I would have is that, as the CRA at their meeting has recommended approval of the ordinances written.
Thank you very much. I remember that. Uh, Member Nelson?
Well, I like the ordinance. I would like to allow recreational vehicles.
That's the PNC's recommendation, yes.
No cars and RVs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing there, right? Member Robinson?
Yes, I mean, uh, uh, when you talk about recreational vehicle, are you limiting to size? Because recreational vehicles can go, they can go from small to huge.
Run that back.
That's a concern of, of mine because you, you'd only have so much, but you start allowing, uh, too many recreational vehicles, size and not governed size. Uh, but that, that should, that'd be a concern.
Anything you want to add to that, Ms. Busaka? It's hard to follow that, I know.
No, sir.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Yes, so the original ordinance had it not having RVs. Can you just speak to why you guys were recommending that?
You may notice, notice that there is a map on page one thirteen showing the, um, or th, this would be related to a specific size of project and these maps show less than half an acre, greater than half an acre and smaller than two and a half acres. And you can see that there are currently two vacant properties that meet that condition. So what the staff thought was, is that there is not a lot of space to utilize for car rentals and RVs do take a, a large amount of space, but it really is just a decision of the council, whatever you'd like, that we didn't have any, um, any studies showing that these were an issue. We just looked at the size of the properties.
Anything else?
Yeah. Um, no, I kind, I kind of agree with staff's recommendation more. So just looking at this map, I don't know if I see RVs being consistent with that area personally. So I kind of lean towards staff recommendation.
Anybody else? Uh, can we call the cards, please?
We have no cards.
Oh, no, I'm shocked. All right. Um, I, I would, you know, and I think we're getting ready to move on that. I, I tend to, um, I like the idea of opening it up to the RVs. The, the concern, of course, is it could be huge.
You didn't say it, right?
No, I did not. Um, and, and, and we don't have, uh, specific size or anything like that. I know that's getting too, you know, that's probably getting too bureaucracy, but...
I would have, we, I'd have to ask that this be tabled and do some research. I have it in front of me.
I think that, you know, as much as, I think it's a good idea to open that up and I think ultimately we may get to that. But I think right now, I think we could just go with the staff's version and move forward. Uh, I do think that we may find somebody that's, pretty soon, who's going to say, hey, what about this? And we'll readdress it. So I'm ready to go with Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes, sir. Vice, uh, mayor and council, I move that we approve nine E, ordinance number fourteen, that's twenty twenty-two car rental agencies in downtown district, striking the prohibition on RV.
Okay, second.
I have the motion from Vice Mayor Jordan, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
So for clarification for me, are you including PNC's recommendations?
Yes. Yes.
Member Robinson?
No.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
No.
Passes three to two. All right, city manager.
On to nine B, this is the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six community development block grant consolidated plan, uh, and the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual block plan. Staff is recommending approval of the city's twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six consolidated plan and annual action plan as written and the authorization for the mayor and neighborhood services director to sign the grant application and program certifications as required and submit it to HUD by a Brevard County Home Consortium. A thirty-day public comment period will follow prior to the submission of the plans. The public hearing has been advertised to afford the public the opportunity to provide comments prior to the smittle to HUD. And this is the, uh, public hearing for the community development block grant. Terry Franklin is available to answer questions that you may have on this.
All right. Member Robinson, do you, are you have a question?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Ms., Ms. Terry, feel free to start us off here. Thank you.
Sure. I know this is a large document to, um, to read through and a lot of information. So I welcome any questions you have. I just wanted to clarify, um, for the public that may be here on this item, that the dollar amounts that you see in the plan are estimates at this point. When we prepared the report, we hadn't received the notification from HUD and as of tonight, we still have not received, uh, the notification on the exact amount of grant funds the city will receive for next year. Um, we're confident that it will be, um, in proximity to what we currently have for this year. But if there's a great, um, leadway, either less or more, we will certainly, uh, let council know of that.
All right, Member Robinson.
Yes, Terry, you know that, you know, looking at all of this and, you know, the, with inflation and numbers and, uh, it is not, uh, if it's the same as we have, we've received this year or proximity thereof, it's not going to be a whole lot of dollars that you're going to be able to do anything with. How many years of dollars are you carrying over to this point and how long can that last?
For CDBG, we don't really carry over, um, by years. Uh, it can be, um, from several years, but small pots from each year. Uh, mostly that's for infrastructure projects that have carried over and more particularly, um, with the COVID issues that we're having with the lack of materials and the lack of contractors. Um, we're finding that a little more often. But, um, for this year, I anticipate we're probably only carrying over about a hundred thousand, um, for projects that were already approved.
Correct. Anybody else have any questions? Uh, call the cards, please.
Tony Shifflow.
Tony Shifflow, seven fifteen Tropic Street in this, um, in the general neighborhood that's being considered by the CDBG grant. And, um, I want to speak definitely in favor of it, especially, um, on page one twenty-two of seven eighty in your war and peace documents tonight. You guys get these agendas that are just huge. Um, they list the priorities and I wanted to point out that especially priority number three, to improve public facilities in this general area, infrastructure such as sidewalks and parks and the community center. I think it's very important. I live in this area. I see the needs and, um, being on the historic preservation board, number five, the neighborhood revitalization strikes me as the most, um, important because it would cover facade improvement, landscaping, a cleanup campaign in the neighborhood. And my husband, boy, he gets so upset about the litter and he says, what's, he's Bahamian. So he says, what's wrong with Americans? They just throw things wherever they happen to be. So, um, an anti-litter campaign and the CDBG grant funding, I think, would provide trash receptacles at various places in a wa, this is a very pedestrian oriented neighborhood. And so to have trash cans for them to throw their pop cans and their Styrofoam cups and things would be really useful. So I just hope that, um, we can go as far with this grant as we can and get as much money as you possibly can. And, um, I think that the education in the neighborhood, we really need to get more people involved. You know how involved I am? I haven't been to a single one of these meetings. I don't get any notification about it. I don't know anything about it. I, I'm familiar with CDBG grants from my works in Atlanta. Um, and so I just hope this comes through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, any other cards?
Last card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, Setta Avenue. Uh, you know that I'm a registered engineer and used to work here in the city and so forth. And I've got some projects here and did a bunch of them here in the city. And I've, I've also worked some with Terry and, uh, she's done a fantastic job. And I don't know what we'd do without her. I don't want her ever to retire, live forever. But, uh, um, my concern here tonight is that, is that, uh, I'm, first of all, I'm a, uh, I certainly am for and approve what, what we're doing with the CDBG. In fact, this is nineteen eighty-six, we, uh, we built a concrete road with CDBG funds and we built a concrete apron, twenty feet wide, serving Mockingbird Lane. Whoa, I said Mockingbird Lane, twenty feet wide. So what happened in August of last year, in spite of my protests, complaining protests, is the city of Titusville approved a sketch plat, the planning and zoning and the council against me. And they approved it instead of going from a, we went from a twenty-foot concrete paid by CDBG funds apron and said it's going to be only ten feet. We're going to only use ten feet of that. Service two homes, their only access, called Mockingbird Lane. Don't even put the name on the plat, don't even put the name on the plans. I don't believe you did it. I don't believe it. But you did it anyways. Don't even recognize the stop sign, street signs, nothing. So, so that ten foot was finally changed to twelve foot. Doesn't even line up with the twenty-foot, uh, concrete apron that was approved by the city of Titusville, constructed with public funds, CDBG. No recognition whatsoever. I don't believe you did it. I don't believe it. And I'm still protesting that. Maybe it'll go to court. I don't understand how in the world you could possibly ignore this, this needs. It's deprivation of, of the two-way traffic ability, existing traffic for these people who are disabled and elderly. That's what the city's doing. Don't look at me. I'm sure. I don't know what, the city manager won't return my call. In fact, this, the people on that same street, they call and city manager won't answer. No response. Just let it go. So anyhow, that's the same project that I've got this fake survey on. So, uh, somebody's going to, somebody's going to own this project and they're going to come to the city and what are they going to say? What are you going to say? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Any other cards? Motion?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six CDBG consolidate plan and twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual action.
I have the motion from Vice Mayor Jordan.
Second.
I have the second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Passing unanimously. It passes and I, I don't want to let you go without saying thank you for all you do. We don't, I don't get to see you unless you're here. I go by there. Uh, you guys, your team does a great job every day. You make a difference in people's lives every day. Cause I know I send and call you and I send a lot of people down there who have issues and you do a great job of best you can to help them. Thank you. All right, city manager.
A city attorney will read the procedures for quasi judicial.
Thank you.
During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. For staff and applicant, all witnesses that intend to speak must sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, of all agenda items and property advertised. In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed. If written, ex parte communications exist, verify that applicant has received them and has the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed.
All right. Very good. I was trying to say the end. All right, uh, Ms. Busaka, you want to?
Hang on, let me introduce real quick. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of the existing private school on a campus of Park Avenue Baptist Church located at twenty-six hundred South Park Avenue. The subject property contains nineteen point four one acres and is currently developed as a church and associated school. The school has been operating on the site since early nineteen eighties and CUP is being requested in order to expand the school. Staff recommended two conditions. As a condition of the approval, parking for the school shall be designated by signage to ensure that the school parking spaces meet the required twenty-five foot, uh, front set back line from the R one B zoning district. The second was a BTR for this, that the school shall be annotated to prohibit special education classes for juvenile offenders, correctional facilities, drug or alcohol dependency, abuse, or similar type programs. On May fourth, twenty twenty-two, the planning and zoning commission recommended and voted approval of CUP three twenty twenty-two. Park Avenue Baptist Church School with staff recommendation... Park Avenue Baptist Church School with staff recommendations as follows, recommended approval of one, and recommended that they did not approve number two. The vote was six yes, one no. The chairperson, Spidey, voted no because she felt that there was additional construction needed in covered walkways. Now, Ms. Busaka.
Now, I'm ready for Ms. Busaka, my bad.
I just wanted to perhaps explain the, what I believe was some confusion related to the second requirement. The, actually, the code requires that a school within R1B have a special, shall not, I'm reading from the code, shall not allow special education classes for juvenile delinquents, correctional facilities, drug or alcohol dependency, abuse, or similar type programs in any residential zoning and land use designations. I think there was some confusion that this would limit the church in some way. This is unrelated to church activities. It is only related to the school. So all we're suggesting is that this be put on the BTR so it's consistent with the code. And the staff has reviewed this. We find that this is consistent with the requirements of the conditional use permit general conditions, and that it is also with those recommendations consistent with the specific requirements of the conditional use permit for a school in residential. We, this is a longstanding use, and it's, staff looked a very long time to see if we could find some specific approval. We couldn't, so we think that this just cleans up the ability for that school to be absolutely determined as conforming and to allow it to expand. So staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Member Robinson?
Yeah. So as I understand it, that there is a provision or people, the schools, if they're teaching special ed or children with behavioral problems?
The specific.
Explain that to me, because I saw that, and I want to understand it.
Well, it's, it's because it's, it's in a residential zoning category. And so the specific language is juvenile delinquents, correctional facilities, drug or alcohol dependency, abuse, or similar programs. And I believe that is because they were concerned, the authors of this particular part of the code were concerned that those types of programs could cause an issue in the R1B zoning category.
Okay, now, we know that that's just related to the educational part of the issue. What if they had those programs over at the church side?
There are no provisions for any conditions related to that for the school, for the church.
Even though that they're on the same?
Yes, yes, sir. This is because those are two separate uses. The church already has a special exception, which is kind of
Right.
the old-fashioned conditional use permit. And so they're allowed to move forward. So this is only for the school activities.
I wanted to understand that and make, thank you.
All right, anything from council? All right.
Anything else? The only thing that, tell me more about having the awning so that the kids can walk out of the rain from building.
We don't need to.
Yeah.
Well, I, well, I can't tell you about it, she's not here. But I can tell you, Ms. Bydel and I go back to the Titusville High School days, and I can tell you that when I heard that and read that, it made me think exactly, we had the same concerns at Titusville High School. And you may see all the little awnings now, the little coverings all over the place that look like little mouse, mouse things. We didn't used to have those. And we get caught in the rain a lot here sometimes. But we also have, in my, my mind, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, and ultimately they may want to do that. But I also think that we have 54 acres at Titusville High School, and it starts raining, and you're out in the middle of nowhere. They're pretty close to buildings wherever they're at there. So I don't see that as being the same factor there. And I'm just, and that's just my inference, and Ms. Bydel may be watching right now and say it's got nothing to do with it. But I will just say for myself that I, when she said that, I thought, well, gosh, I can see where she may be thinking that, because at THS, we had a lot of problems with outside rains, and we ended up getting the coverings everywhere. I personally don't see the same issue at Park Avenue.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, I have been to schools and visiting from time to then when they had the, the extra building. And I, I, every student that I've ever, many students that I've talked to, they wish they had the awning. But, you know, half a dozen in my hand. But I think that that awning is a great plus for having the.
And I don't disagree with that. For me, it's not going to be a reason to say no at this time. I can see the way they want to go forward, but at this time, I think that we're, we'd be good to go, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I don't even want to talk about awnings. Awnings are very expensive, number one, and second of all, it is not a requirement. If you listen to the chairperson, she said she just wanted to have that, and that's, that is not a requirement. So, you know, the, to me, the most important thing is they're growing.
That's right.
And I think it's a positive thing that the school is growing, and we got some good people over there for sure. So I guess we need to listen here.
That's what I'm waiting on.
Okay.
Thank you. So I was just explaining, somebody asked me, I guess you asked me, somebody asked me to explain the awning thing, and I think that's what it is. With that, applicant, Charles Turner. I was looking over there, Mr. Long over there. Okay. Hello there, sir.
Good, good evening. Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue in Titusville. Staff did a good job explaining.
How'd I do on the awnings?
You guys did good, too. Staff did a good job of explaining the CUP. I mean, the school's been there a long time, as you know, and they searched and couldn't find a special exception for CUP. So that's why we're applying, to make sure we're all in, in the conditions. Some other things I'll add is, in your, in your packet was a pick-up and drop-off route for the school. There's one, as it exists now and as it proposed, if you haven't ever been there, it works very well. And that's, that's always good that the people don't park out in the street. The school's been operating for a long time, they don't have any nuisance factors. The hours of operation are coordinated with the church, so there's no, no issue with parking, there's always ample parking. It's well-established, compatible with the neighborhood. The code states that there is a 50-foot setback from a residential district. I don't agree with that, but we're not arguing that point tonight. And then also, we're, we're not arguing the point about the, the second condition about prohibiting some of the educational uses, not for, for sure. I understand that that's no problem if there are two separate business tax receipts, one for the church, one for the school. I'm not sure that's the case, but if that, if that does arise, then, you know, we need it, we'd be back. But I urge you to support this, and I think you and I am willing to answer any question you might have.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I think the only clarification, and Member Robinson brought it up, he says special education kids. When you're dealing with ESE kids, that's special education, but you can do that at the school. They're talking about delinquent kids.
Correct, absolutely.
So there's no prohibition for them doing ESE. You got to do ESE, ESE kids, so.
Separate entity, you are correct. Uh, Member Stokel?
Just to clarify, so you are okay with staff's recommendation with the two conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Nope? Call the cards?
William Shivers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, sir.
Vice Mayor, council members. My name is William Shivers. I reside at 3735 Chiara Drive, which is just across the street from the city limits. But I do operate a business at 6285 Riverfront Center, which is Rush Construction. And as a point of clarification, our firm is assisting Park Avenue with the permitting and with some of the other pre-construction type services. We're doing it on a non-compensatory basis, so we're volunteering our time and services. We're not being paid, so I just want to make that clarification. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for the CUP, primarily as a longstanding member of Park Avenue Church. This is my church home, has been for the last 37 years, and is a father and a grandfather. Park Avenue Baptist Church has been a fixture in this community for over 50 years, and I think everyone's aware of the work that is done in this community for many, many, many years. Like I say, I've been a member there for 37 years. My daughter is a graduate of Park Avenue Christian Academy. She started there about 30-some years ago, so she's sitting over there. I didn't do that, that's her. My granddaughter just graduated a year ago from Park Avenue Christian Academy, and she's now a freshman at Astronaut High School. And I have a grandson who is currently a seventh grader at Park Avenue Christian Academy. So Park Avenue Christian Academy has a very special place in my heart and in my wife's heart as well. It has provided my children and my grandchildren an exceptional education in a safe Christian environment. So it's, it's a school home for us as well. The other reason I'd like to ask for your approval is that this academy is busting at the seams. So this is a badly needed additional space for us to be able to add five modular classrooms to allow for, I think, between 80 and 100 students. We have a waiting list. Dr. McKinney has done an outstanding job as the administrator there. It's providing a very valuable alternative to many parents in place of where they want to put their kids in for an education, and it's a very good alternative. So it has a very meaningful place in this community. By the way, I'd like to speak to the walkway issue, Mr. Mayor. We are a Baptist church, we have offering plates, and we'd love to pass the plates around. And if we can get about $150,000 to $200,000 tonight, we will commit to putting in walkways. So just an offer.
We can't comment on that.
Anyway, we, we appreciate your support, we hope you'll support the CUP, and thank you very much for your service to our community, and God bless.
Thank you very much. Before we even move to the next one, I'm going to take a, a second here to, to say something, because having been at Titusville High School for 35 years, I can tell you that it was always an honor to get the students we could get from Park Avenue Baptist. I used to do the, what we called the Terrier Tours and bring all the different schools over, and just a class act all the way around. And obviously, their academics are top-notch, and they bring that with them. And they have some great athletes as well. It's just a privilege that we get so many of their students. So I can tell you on the back end that they are definitely well-prepared and well-mannered, outstanding young people. And that's just something I will always remember, being at Titusville High School, what we got from Park Avenue was, was real, real quality, and I appreciate that. Any other cards?
Yes, sir. Charles Long.
Yildiz?
Dana Corin. D U R R.
I don't know, I don't know.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Sett Avenue. Thank you, Peggy, for your review. Good job. And I guess I have to say, announce my prejudicial concern is my, my, my family has been a member of Park Avenue Baptist since 1970, and I'm still a member right now. So that's, I'm a little bit, but I, I think it's fine that we don't have the covered walkways. And I want to say ditto for what Rodney had to say. Thank you, Rodney.
Honeycutt? Yes, yes. Thank you, good job, Rodney. Any other cards? Uh, applicant, you certainly have a right to come back up. And we're good there. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve conditional use permit number 3-2022 for a school, public or private, at 2600 South Park Avenue, Park Avenue Baptist Church.
I have the motion from Vice Mayor Jordan.
Second.
I have the second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Does this include recommendations of staff?
Yes.
Staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
With honor, it passes unanimously. Thanks for all you do for our community. Well done. City Manager?
Onto item 9D, which is conditional use permit 1 2022 to increase the allowable height for a hotel and two multifamily buildings in urban village zoning district for the property located at 3550 South Washington Avenue. The applicant, Lisa McCotter, on behalf of the property owner Jesse Wright, is requesting a conditional use permit to increase the allowable height of two multifamily buildings and a seven, seven-story hotel. For section 28106 of the Land Development Regulations, building over 60 feet in height require conditional use permit within the urban village zoning district. On May 4, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and recommended approval with staff recommendations as presented, 7-0. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this CUP 1 2022.
Ms. Busaka?
I just wanted to, I know you remember writing this ordinance very recently, and the requirement is that the setback is equivalent to the height of the building. At the time that this report was written, the staff was unsure as to the exact height of the building. We now believe it to be somewhere about 75 feet. So the analysis that the building does not meet the setbacks of 90 feet is probably moot point. However, the recommendation is, in order to be consistent with the code, that if the building is found to be higher than the setbacks, either the building has to be lowered or the setbacks have to be increased. We really won't know that until we get a site plan, and then, so this is still, but the condition, we believe, well, has to be met, so I wanted to make you aware of that. In addition to that, there are four options that the developer could choose as to the incentive. The developer has informed us that they intend to do the low-impact development techniques that would increase stormwater treatment by at least 10% more treatment volume than required by the Land Development Regulations. That will be reviewed at the site plan stage. The staff has found that this additional height is consistent with the mixed-use, urban mixed-use zoning designation and future land use policies, and I won't go through all of them, but they are listed in your staff report. In addition to that, the staff does not anticipate new nuisance issues related to odor, smoke, glare, and electrical interference with the proposed development. As part of the requirement, there is a shade study required, and that has been included within your package and begins on page, I think it's 320 of your package. And the staff has reviewed the conceptual plan, requires a 20-foot landscape buffer along Hopkins and a decorative fence, and this will also, this is not related to the conditional use permit itself, but it will, it is required, and that will be, again, reviewed and approved as part of the site plan. The, let me see here. I've told you about the shading study, and the staff finds that with the incentives that were put into the proposal and that will be reviewed at site plan, that the staff recommends conditional use permit, approval of conditional use permit number 1 2022.
Ms. Busaka, just to clarify, as we get started, the only thing this council is doing is considering the conditional use permit to increase the allowable height for a hotel and the two multifamily buildings.
That is correct. If there are any variances or waivers needed, there's a process, but that does not come back to this council.
So we can be very focused on the.
That is correct.
So I wanted, just wanted to clarify that before we get started. Uh, Member Robinson?
Yeah, I understand that the issue, Peggy, the issue that was discussed at planning and zoning, just 90, imaginary 90 feet, because you didn't have the exact measurements and so forth, is not an issue right now.
We still don't have the exact measurements of the building, but the building code requires that the average height of the building is the total height. So in this instance, there is a large square area, you know, the, like the footprint of the building, and there is one structure, the elevator. But we believe that, well, we will require this setback when the site plan is reviewed.
Well, whether that... If you approve that, then you can, when you get the site plan, you come back and you make all the adjustments at that time?
Yes, sir. That's exactly how it works.
Okay. All right. That kind of makes this an easy one.
Member Stokel?
Yeah. I just want to clarify a little bit of the history of this, so... Because we've been at a particular project for a while. So we initially changed our ordinance to allow for a CUP.
The CUP's already always been there.
Okay.
But you may remember it had a requirement that fifty percent of the property
Yes.
had to be put back into its native state, natural state. That's the amendment that was made.
Okay. So we made that amendment to make development easier
Correct.
as a council. And then we made conditions to allow for a CUP, what those conditions would have to entail if an applicant were to apply for a CUP, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then now we're here to decide on, does the CUP, do we approve it based on, are they meeting the conditions?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify because I feel like sometimes we get called, like, we're not easy to work with. I think that we've been very easy to work with in allowing and trying to make things work. So hopefully now we have an application for a CUP that meets the conditions that we've all seen ahead of time and voted on, and we can make our decision tonight.
I don't know. I make a decision every time I say yes. Okay. Nobody else here? So the floor is the applicants.
Good evening. Ms. Busaka, you made my night. I don't really have to discuss the page one. I think we could just tear it up, throw it away. Don't have to deal with this. May I ask the panel if I could take three minutes to watch the latest video and three minutes to talk?
Yes, I believe that's the presentation, right?
If that would be okay?
Yes. Before you do that...
The newest version.
Just say your name and address.
Jesse Wright, thirty-five-fifty South Washington Avenue. Sorry about that.
There you go. And yes, go ahead and go forward with your presentation. There we go, I think.
So I'm gonna... Because there's no sound, I'm gonna explain this. So this is the road coming off of the US One. And you see the drive-through restaurant on the left side, which is about three thousand square feet, and the five thousand square feet of restaurant that is right next to it, facing US One. This is the road coming off of the Narvus from south. Now you're looking at the Hilton Hotel through by Hilton. On the left side is the two-hundred-and-forty apartment buildings. We took out the parking garage. So we will be having twenty-five one-bedrooms and about thirty thousand square feet of amenity and convention, meeting room. To the right is the senior living. We're not going to be going through the pool area, and you'll see the pool area. We took out the jacuzzi. And the clubhouse right across from it. That's the Hilton right behind the car wash. This is the road coming from the country club to the south, and to the left is the senior living and the apartment building, seven-story, mid-rise, no more comments on the height. Now we're going into the commercial portion, two-story, forty thousand square feet each floor. Now you're looking at towards west. There are two parcels, twenty thousand square feet for the antique mall that we have right now in the mall. Doesn't look anywhere close to what we have right now, but... And a ten thousand square feet of another parcel, retail, facing Hopkins, sorry. We are in negotiations with Parish Medical to pick up about seven thousand square feet on the first floor of the structure, about eighty thousand square feet, two-story. And that's it. So on the second page, with good intention and good faith, we are going to go ahead and do the, as was discussed, the charging station as you requested. And we will have two for each building. And per Ms. Busaka's request, we will be still doing the three shading room of twelve-by-twelve. The only areas that has to be going through the staff would be the buffer. Unfortunately, we cannot make the twenty-foot buffer. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that through the staff. And the size of the parking spaces are typically, per code, should be ten by twenty, but we cannot meet the ten by twenty as Titus Landing was not able to. We're able to do a nine by eighteen. And the sign package, we would need to have at least two signs, one for Hilton and one for the rest of the tenants. And I do understand that because of so many developments, Ms. Busaka's department is very busy on remarks and the comments of sixty days. I'm hoping we could be put on the very fast track of getting comments faster as soon as we submit the site plan. That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. The rest of it is basically the shading study, and it meets the requirements. We have no issues with the shade going to anybody's business or anybody's home.
Well, I don't really have a question at this point. I think it's pretty cut and dry what we need to vote on, but I'd really like to have a vision, to be able to see what you're visioning. And, boy, can you get that done by tomorrow? No. You know, obviously, it's an area that our citizens look at daily when they go by. You can't miss it. And certainly, we are hopeful and want our best over here to... You can make that video come to life.
We will.
And I appreciate that.
You have my word on that.
There we go. Member Robinson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Wright. How are you doing? And it's beautiful. Where, you know, just like down at Titus Landing, where are the buses going to stop to drop all of your...
That's a request for Vice Mayor Jordan. I was going to ask for the senior, can we have transportation for them? We used to have a bus station at the mall, but we were getting really some wrong elements coming in, so we had to discontinue that. But we don't have any buses coming in and...
I'm talking about, are you going to, you know, like the slide-offs down at the movie theater, down at Titus Mall? Are you going to be able to withen part of Hopkins where the buses can pull in and safely drop off the people?
I don't know where the buses are stopping right now. I can't answer your question. Sorry.
Yeah. But you're... You don't talk about that.
Yeah, just like they do over there at Titus Landing.
I just wanted to know, because you have to have a safe drop-off.
Right.
You know, you have a lot of bus traffic, you know, in and out of there. But that was just my own... Beautiful, beautiful...
Beautiful.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll go with cards, and then you come back up if need be.
We have few speakers if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely. Whatever you want to do. It's your show.
Rodney is next, and we have three other people.
Good evening again. Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven-hundred South Washington Avenue. I appreciate you supporting this project. I think it'll be a great improvement for the city. Take care of an eyesore. We appreciate you supporting the master plan, changing the conditions for the CUP. And then so here tonight, we're asking for the conditional use permit for those regulations. One thing that was concerned was building height. I think originally it was thought that building height was the height of the tallest piece of the structure, but that's not the case. It's per the Florida Building Code. And so I'm not an architect. That's the building code. And so I talked to the client's architect and said, can you calculate that for us? And so he explained to me that there's an elevator shaft that will go all the way to the floor, and that's, you know, taller, ten or fifteen feet. And then from the floor below, there's a couple elevator shafts that'll go up just a few feet above it. And then there'll be two exit stairwells, and they'll be a little bit there. But when you average all that out, it just barely raises the Florida... The height of the building per the Florida Building Code. And so it looks good right now. And so we verified that with the chief building official here, and so we feel good. And I ask you that you support it tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I see no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up?
Good evening. I'm Cindy Mott, three-five-five-zero South Washington Avenue. I'm the manager of the Titusville Antique Mall. And as such, I am here as the spokesperson for the eighty vendors, eighty small businesses that we have within the confines of the Titusville Antique Mall, which I'm sure you saw in the video. We're going to have a whole brand-new building. We're very excited about that. Just to give you a little synopsis of who and what we are, we have vendors from the age of twenty-four years old, she's our youngest, to two of the gentlemen who have been patiently waiting here all evening long. Eighty-six years young. So we're very pleased to have all these vendors. They live all over Brevard and Orange County. I personally live in Orange County. And they come here specifically to the Titusville Antique Mall because of its reputation in the community as a very reasonable, very eclectic, friendly, and customer-oriented business. So we're very blessed to have these eighty small businesses under one roof. We have been here for ten years. The Antique Mall has been in business for ten years in the old Publix Building. And if you ever want to see those old tiles before they tear the building down, just walk into our office. We still have the old Publix tiles there. So that tells you how well they lasted, what, fifty, sixty-some years now? So we do have customers, seven hundred to eight hundred customers a week is what we have on average in our Antique Mall, bigger during the holiday season and, of course, bigger during the snowbird season. Our vendors fully understand the amount of work that will be entailed for us to move from one building to another. We have probably a million or more items. If you've ever been in there, you know they range from this big to full-size furniture. Our vendors understand this project. They understand Jesse's vision. They know that we're going to have a lot of work to do once we move into the new building. But I can tell you, as their spokesperson, it is unanimous support for his vision and for the new Antique Mall. So on that, I ask that you please respectfully, I ask that you please vote yes, because we do support it.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Howard Graham, and I am at three-five-nine-five South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida. So I just wanted to say I give my full support for Jesse Wright's project at the old Sears Town Shopping Mall there. Live right across the street in the Rio Vista Patio Homes there, and it's been an eyesore for years. Just seeing the decrepit building just waste away, and so to have the new life in that, you know, project there would be fantastic. I love the new height of the building there, the charging stations. It's going to be great for the environment with the runoff too with the rainwater, and think it's going to be awesome for Titusville. It's going to bring in some new jobs, new development. And I just wanted to ask for your support for the project, and thank you all for all that you've done so far. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank being here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa McCotter, Country Club Drive. I do support the height request, and I would ask that you support it as well. I do appreciate the support and the work and the attention that you've given this project for so many months now. And to me, it's so exciting to see the video. It really does look what my concept of an urban village is, and that's... I think that's really exciting for our community. Also, I'd like to answer your question, as far as I know, with the buses, there has been the bus stop has remained just behind the, actually, the Antique Mall on Hopkins, and I would assume that that would not change, but that, you know, the enhanced stop would be something that would be looked at in the future. And thank you all.
Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Busaka, I think we discussed the extension for the R, the ride-off way.
That was approved under consent agenda.
Okay. With that said, I really appreciate the staff and certainly you guys, and I'm surprised that you have no questions. I'm just curious.
Let me do ask a question. And obviously, that's got us all fired up. That looks great. I mean, that's really a great vision, and we all can't wait. Knowing that we can't get it all done today or tomorrow, is there a timeframe for when we might start taking some of the old building down? Or do we have an idea when something like that might start where we could all say, hey, this is going to happen?
Unfortunately, I lost the first lender that I was counting on, and because they were having the funds blocked since December thirty-first, so they couldn't hold on additional time. So I'm meeting with the second and the only lender right now. The reason I don't want to go too fast on demolitions is because I don't want a lot of rain and storm coming in. So I'd like to make sure that the loan is going to be funded. We're going to be doing the demo. At the same time, we're putting the building permit. So we don't need to... We should basically go demolition, site plan, vertical on the phase one, and then moving on into the other phases.
Okay.
So I would say probably early next year.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And I'll be on that bulldozer again.
All right. And then we'll be back. And so that's... You're good. Okay, go ahead. Come on up. It's out here long enough. You should get to say something.
My name is Robert Herndon. I'm a co-vendor at the mall. I can't tell you how excited I am about this building. Senior housing, two more restaurants, which we desperately need in Titusville. I just think it's great, and I just want to know I'm here to support it. And I'm the eighty-six-year-old one. Thank you.
We're glad you're here. Thank you. Anybody else from there? Mr. Wright, are you done with your presentation? Well, I'm getting ready to call for cards, so we'll find out. Call the cards, please.
H.D. McWhite. H.D. McWhite.
Hey, buddy. Good evening.
Here is a vice mayor.
How are you?
Always very excited about this. I'm from a family that, again, I came back here to take care of my mother.
Yep.
And I've been dealing with a lot of people that are taking care of their elderly people. So we can't go far from Titusville. We have to be here. You know, we have cameras at the house and all that. So I'm learning about Titusville, that the Indian Sittler is beautiful inside and great. I'm learning that Cafe Paradiso, you should really try it, that's vice mayor downtown, is great. And Leaf Lounge is growing. People actually want to stay here and enjoy here. And the earlier meeting, when I hear John Jones was his name that did the review, everything that he was listing out at the end of the review was basically saying what he's building.
I know.
So I'm meeting with the second and the only lender right now. The reason I don't want to go too fast on demolitions, because I don't want a lot of rain and storm coming in. So I'd like to make sure that the loan is going to be funded. We're going to be doing the demo. At the same time, we're putting the building permit. So we don't need to, we should basically go demolition, site plan, vertical on the phase one, and then moving on into the other phases.
Okay.
So I would say probably early next year.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And I'll be on that bulldozer again.
All right. And then we'll be back. And so that's, you're good. Okay, go ahead. Come on up. You've been here long enough, you should get to say something.
My name is Robert Herndon. I'm a co-vendor at the mall. I can't tell you how excited I am about this building. Senior housing, two more restaurants, which we desperately need in Titusville. I just think it's great, and I just want to know I'm here to support it. And I'm the 86-year-old one.
We're glad you're here. Thank you. Anybody else from there? Mr. Wright, are you done with your presentation? Well, I'm getting ready to call for cards, so we'll find out. Call the cards, please.
H.D. McWhite. H.D. McWhite.
Hey, buddy. Good evening.
There he is, Vice Mayor.
How are you?
Always very excited about this. I'm from a family, again, I came back here to take care of my mother.
Yep.
And I've been dealing with a lot of people that are taking care of their elderly people. So we can't go far from Titusville. We have to be here. You know, we have cameras at the house and all that. So I'm learning about Titusville, that the Indian Sittler is beautiful inside and great. I'm learning that Cafe Paradiso, you should really try it, that vice mayor downtown, is great. And Leaf Lounge is growing. People actually want to stay here and enjoy here. And the earlier meeting, when I hear John Jones was his name that did the review, everything that he was listing out at the end of the review was basically saying what he's building.
I know.
Everything that people want here and they're looking for is what he's bringing. So I'm just encouraging everyone to move forward and let Titusville be bigger, better, and a shining light on this coast and for this state.
Good job. Yep. Sounds good. Next card.
Stuart Buchanan.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Buchanan. I'm a resident of the city of Titusville, Florida. I actually came to City Hall tonight to pay my water bill. But I don't normally appear in front of a city council wearing vans. But then I saw that this redevelopment project was on your agenda, and it was important enough that I thought I should stick around. So real quickly, in the hotel industry, you're, it's known as your flag. Your brand name is known as your flag, and it's based on height. If you allow nine-story hotels, you get a Courtyard by Marriott. If you allow five-story hotels, you get a Fairfield by Marriott. The type of flag and the quality and the brand of the hotel you get is based on height, and that's why I hope you approve this project. Just a couple of the short comments, just like Mr. Honeycutt said when he spoke to the architect about the rooftop mechanicals. Some cities, in their definition of height, have clarified in their land development regulations that rooftop mechanicals don't count, and those is not counted. And here's why. If you have to use a different-sized chiller than you thought, or a different-sized elevator, something changes, you don't have to go back in front of the city council and get a variance of three feet or two feet or anything like that. So if you look at some of the cities, well, they do have lots of tall buildings, like Daytona Beach, Daytona Beach Shores, they've added that little clarification in their definition of height. The only other thing I wanted to say in closing is, many of the cities I worked for, when we did a conditional use permit for a building over a certain size, we also included the ability to put public communications on the roof. And the reason we did that was we were paying thousands of dollars for our 911 systems on cell phone towers. So when we approved a condo in South Daytona, or Holly Hill, or Daytona Beach Shores, we included the language that allowed us to put public, just public, communications on the rooftop. And we got out of all those cell phone tower leases for our 911 system. That's it. I really hope you approve this project. I'd love to see this redevelopment take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Nathan Slusher.
Nathan Slusher at 860 Allen D Street. I just want to say I've sat in that office, and I've looked at those plans, and I love this project. I've asked a million questions. I love what he's going to do. I cannot wait for the environmental stuff that's going to come out of this, because I'm really tired of looking at the concrete. And that video was really, really good, and I got to tell this guy back here, there's no way I can beat what he came up here and said. He already, he took lines right out of what I was going to say. What they said at the CRA meeting about having a name-brand hotel, there's one right here. So I encourage you to approve this definitely.
Next card.
Dan Johnston. And the last, last card is Connie Milton.
Hi, my name's Connie Milton. I live at 6822 Windover Way in Windover Farms.
Do that.
Yeah. I have lived in Titusville for 58 years. I went to Titusville High School as well, obtained my Electrical Engineering degree and my Master's in Engineering from UCF, worked with NASA for 32 years and retired. It's great to be retired. The reason I'm here talking about this, I'm not for or against it. I own a house just a half a block away from where the Sears Town Mall is going to be demolished. I'm glad to see that happen. It's been a bad eyesore for years. Of course, I was here back when the malls were built. They belong, these big old malls have seen their day. They've come, and now they're going. Thank goodness. But I was a little concerned, I guess, to hear that maybe the parking is getting smaller. I didn't really see initially, I heard there was a lot of parking garages going to be there. I don't know what's happened to them, looking at the video. Maybe he just passed by the parking garages. But those of us that have R1B-zoned houses right next to this new development, if there's not enough parking in that area, is there going to be parking down on the side streets where all the houses are? You've got two small lots, two small parking spots now. What about these big, you know, folks now travel a lot in their SUVs or their 24-foot size? Is there any ability to have additional parking or a lot, you know, a little bit larger-sized parking spots in some of those locations? I know the mall, the Antique Mall loves it. They, it looks like a one-story mall there, but a lot of this is very high. I was, I was kind of hoping we would get some shade from it, but I guess you're trying to keep the shade off of the houses. And the heat of the summer, it's pretty hot in those 1959-year-old houses. But I, I'm neither for nor against it. I just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad to see it happen. But the surrounding community that is residential are R1B-zoned, and now we're putting a big development in a hotel right next to it, and it's growing. You know, this, this concept is growing and growing right there and right next to these homes. So glad it's coming, but, you know, it's growth, I guess.
Good points. I get it. Thank you. We're good. We're good. Next card, next card. Okay, now, you can, if you want, because you're the applicant, you come up and finish. Oh, you're done.
We have, we have a total of about 1,051 parking spaces. So what we did, we took out the parking garage from the phase one, and we doubled up on the size of the building in the commercial portion. So we're two-story instead of one. That's how we were able to get additional parking. So we have, we're meeting the minimum requirement for the parking. Of course, staff is going to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Okay. We have completed that part. There are no more cards, correct? Okay, there, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve conditional use permit number one, that's 2022, to increase the allowable height for hotel and two multifamily buildings in the UV zoning district for property located at 3550 South Washington.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Jordan.
Second.
I have a second by Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Just to clarify, include staff recommendations.
Yes. I mean, that's what I'm.
Yes, 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 yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yeah.
Member Nelson. Mayor Deese.
Another yes for me. It passes unanimously. Move forward. All right, yeah, yeah, we are. All right, City Manager.
Yes, sir. On to new business. And Council, if I could do an administrative adjustment, due to the nature of time and the two remaining items, staff requests that we table items 12B and 12C to the 24 May 22 meeting.
I've got a motion from the Vice Mayor, and I got a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Manager.
Back to item 12A, which is our.
Hold on one second, City Manager. We'll just wait a second. We won't call recess. We'll just wait a second. Wait a minute. Rodney, you almost done back there?
And Mayor and Council, hard to believe, but it is mid-year 2022. This is our financial review. And throughout the midpoint of the FY 2022, revenues continue to be on track consistently with the budget expectations, including state-chaired revenues. Finance will continue to monitor revenues closely throughout the summer months, and will notify Council if any further adjustments are needed. We have a presentation for you, Terry Butler. We'll provide you the mid-year review as well as the proposed changes and budget amendment proposals for your consideration. Terry.
Thank you.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, good evening. We're here a little bit late. My voice is starting to go on me a little bit, so hang with me here. This is the financial update and mid-year budget review. To the next slide. These are the city-approved strategic goals and objectives. These have not changed, and this is what we have kept in focus as we've gone through the budget process. Per the city code, we are required to give you an update, and this presentation, I believe, fulfills that requirement. The city policy is that the city finance department looks at revenue and expenditures. We track them and we trend them, and it's the department's responsibility to take a look at their bottom lines. So we look at these every month, and if we see that something looks like they need to take a look at it, we notify the departments, and that's what we do on a regular basis. The revenues for FY 2022 as of the mid-year, as the city manager stated, they're on track. We continue to monitor them closely with the economic environment that we have, and right now, we're trending perfectly, just as we would expect with the budgeted estimates. On the next slide, we have the general fund, and I pulled the general fund out. As you know, that's the main operating fund of the city that provides services. You can see the amended budget there for both revenues and expenditures. And you can also see that the budgeted revenues are outpacing the expenditures, is what we would expect to see. And so it looks like we're still on track as of mid-year. As also stated, the city managers talked about the shared revenues. They are a significant revenue source in the general fund, just over $7.4 million. You can see that they are trending at 46.6%. That is really good at mid-year, because these sometimes tend to lag a little bit. So I think that we may actually meet or exceed some of our expectations on the shared revenues. The expenditures for FY 22, all funds are within their budgets. They'll continue to be monitored, and the proposed adjustments will keep those funds within their balance, and you'll see those adjustments in the next few slides. So the mid-year proposed adjustments, there was a request by the departments for four full-time FTEs, and there was one for fire, two for water and wastewater resources, and one for community development. And those costs will be included in this slide for the remainder of this year. The mid-year request in detail, the first page here is the general fund. All of these requests, as I stated, do include the full-time, the four FTEs at the remaining cost just for this year. General fund is just over $121,000. The next slide, you have three more funds. It's general construction, solid waste, and stormwater. Those three funds together have requested just under $150,000. Then we have water and wastewater. The next two slides will be water and wastewater, and you can see the details here of what the department directors have requested. So the total of all of these requests is $826,333. For the conclusion, we're saying that revenues are on track, we're managing to the bottom line, and the balanced budget with these amendments will still be, still be the case. On the next slide, if you take a look, this is actually fund balances and the capital outlay. As far as we're concerned with this, these numbers are still very solid. You had your review from our auditors about a month ago, and they had stated that we're in healthy financial condition. That is still the state. You see the 826,333 is the total amount of the requests, which reduces the amount of fund balance and the capital outlay, but leaves it still at a very healthy balance. We will still be maintaining all of our required reserves. Okay, so what's coming up next? We've started the budget. We're in full swing with it. Next week, we start department review with the budget, and I'm actually looking forward to that. I am. I'm looking forward to that. So part of the priorities that have been handed down to me to look at as far as the budget build are, we have still the lean six sigma, of course, the strategic goals that you guys have approved, the economic development opportunities, are looking at those, and we're looking at employee professional development. So as of now, we're working on building the budget for '23 using a 5.4% COLA and 8% for the first year in 2023 for operating.
So I'd like to add to that, real quick, if I could. The pay compensation study, that's what you just approved in the contract, too. So the 5.4 COLA, which is basically what the state is using, Brevard County is now proposing, gets us to where everybody rises with the rate of inflation, slightly below the later rate of inflation, actually. But the pay compensation study that we would like to implement partially during this budget year 2023 will take care of some of those shortcomings that we've identified, that hopefully the pay study will also identify. So that'll be part of the budget build, but we started the budget build with a 4, or 5.4 COLA, and knowing that there will be some pay adjustments as part of this budget.
Thank you.
We're still going to monitor the health insurance plans, and we're going to make sure that we take a hard look at staffing needs. Also, as part of the priorities, we're going to focus on near and midterm critical needs. We're going to do the general fund reserves and make sure that those stay intact. We're going to keep our eye on OPEB and make sure that those get funded, and we're going to use managed development. So what's next? We have July 29th. That's when the city manager will be providing you with the proposed budget. I'm looking forward also to the budget workshop that'll be on August 16th. We have September 24th and 22nd for the first and second and final hearing, and I'm available for questions.
Terry's assured us that the budget workshop slides that you're traditionally used to, over 100 slides, will be cut in half, so. But it may be two slides per page.
She goes pretty fast, I'll tell you that. So she can put all she wants, her that fast. Yeah, I will just say that I say to the city manager a lot, and he is the guy to say it's, you know, we have a good team. Clearly, I'm excited about the team that we have, excited about your coming on board, and a lot of great things have been said about, you know, even by the financial company, the great job that you do. I've always liked, in my six years here, it's always seems like, and this, again, kind of shows it to me, we're always a little bit ahead of the curve. We always are looking for that thing that might come and hit us. And I say "we" as in you guys. And that makes me sleep better at night, because I certainly have been to some seminars and some League of Mayor things, and, you know, even if it's just a mayor luncheon, we seem to be way ahead of the curve on an awful lot of things. So I appreciate that. I like that, and I hope we'll keep doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Member Robinson.
Yes. City Manager, as I understand what you said about the 5.4, that will keep us in alignment with inflation, not necessarily in alignment with the results of the inquiry.
It's actually, we're going to be a little bit behind inflation.
I understand.
Yes, sir. But what we're using is what the state used, which is 5.38, what the county is using. The military budget, Tom and I watch that quite a bit, because it's a real good indicator of what the federal government's doing. They're talking about between a 6% and an 8% COLA as part of DoD as well as the GS employees. So we believe, going into this budget year, we started at 4.2, and then when we saw the inflation jumping as high as it did, we made an adjustment, and the state helped us with that. The state actually started at 6% for their cost-of-living adjustment and worked it back down to 5.38. So I think we're, we're in a sweet spot. We may adjust it before we come to budget, but if anything, I think we're going to most likely stay where we're at, because I think that's a good.
Okay, and that's the budget. But the results of the, what we just approved in checking and see how we hold up to the other, other cities.
Yes, sir.
That's a different ballgame.
That is a different ballgame. And what, the last pay compensation study that we did, it took us three years to implement it.
Okay.
Based on, as quickly as things are changing, we will hit the $15 an hour minimum wage a year or two years ahead of schedule. That's our goal. But the way things are changing, we want to make sure that we're keeping up pace with our peer cities. Pompe just did theirs, Coco just did theirs. So based on our review. So based on our review of them, we are falling behind.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we keep with the inflationary pressures our cost of living adjustments and then identify those key and crucial areas that are short and that we're having problems recruiting in and address those through compensation.
I just wanted that to be clear and then to thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, here, I just want to say thank you. Don't underestimate what he said. He and I think a lot alike. And it's kind of interesting because as you're going through the slides, I was saying to myself, it was very smooth. I understood everything, and you got it. And for me, it's getting late out of the way. You did a good job of showing us exactly where we are. Good appreciation. How you are looking forward to this other stuff?
Yeah, that was kind of an interesting comment.
That's a little weird.
Man, I can't wait.
I can't wait.
Here we go.
You got to get a liking.
Budget time. Anybody else? I see none. We need to accept this, or?
Yeah, you'll need to vote on it, and I believe we have probably some cards.
Okay, okay. I want to know about the voting first because I wasn't sure. Okay, call the cards, please.
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
What?
Stan Johnston. I have a few concerns. One concern is that when you raise people's salary throughout, it's actually, it makes the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. If you really look at the, look at how it works out. Somebody gets a low salary, for example, Mr. McCarterian, if you're going to get a 5.4% increase, it's going to be over $25,000. That would be his increase. Does he need another $25,000? So I'm against over-the-board increases like that. Some people who are higher salary do not need to have that increase, that substantial increase for their quality of life. Another question I have is, I may be, I don't really understand what's going on, but we have this program or this grant that we accepted for $10 million for the recycled water, improvement of recycled water, and now it's up to 13.5 million, and I understand it's not going to cost us any money. Of course, it's going to cost the taxpayer money, but that was promoted when we accepted it. It's not going to cost money. So I don't know if that is, it has anything to do with our budget at all. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe it's on some other kind of a balance sheet or something, but I was concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about that. I would like to have the city being responsible for when I ask questions, like, for example, this fake survey. It's a big deal. It's an important thing. In other words, how can anybody build, that's your foundation, is when you have your survey, and here we got a fake survey, and the city's completely ignoring it. I mean, it's beyond a shadow of doubt, it's a fake survey. So why in the world this, communication, like, phone calls aren't answered, emails are not responded to, and we're at a position where I just don't see you're getting the right thing done. So if anybody will answer any of those questions, like, for example, the 13.5 million dollars, I don't know if anybody will answer or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we accept the fiscal year 2022 mid-year financial review, approve the proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2022 as of March 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, a second by Member Nelson. We'll call a vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you and see the pep in your step when you work into that budget. City Manager?
Mayor, since it's approaching 10:30 hour.
We'll be out here a minute and a half, right? Okay. Can I get a motion to extend the meeting? I'd say 15 minutes. No, I'd say 15 minutes.
I would say 25.
Okay, let's go 25. I have a motion to extend for 25 from Member Nelson. I have a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed? It's passes. Put him on the record. All right, so we got till, what, five till? Okay, here we go.
Yes, Mayor, we're on 12D, which is the approval of the final plat and covenants and the acceptance of the easements and performance bonds for Brookshire subdivision. Brookshire is a 166-unit, single-family subdivision located west of I-95 and north of Garden Street. The development is approximately 80 acres and has an overall density of 2.05 units per acre. The Brookshire sketch plat was approved by City Council on 9 January 2018. Section 34161 definition requires that the preliminary, if it wasn't 10:30, I could say that, plat shall be applied within one year of the sketch plat approval. The prelim plat application was submitted on 23 October 2018, which was reviewed and approved by staff on 13 February 2019. On 10 September 2019, the applicant asked for a six-month extension to the prelim plat, which was granted consistent with Section 34172 procedure. As requested by the applicant, the expiration date of the prelim plat for Phase 1 approval was told to 294 days plus the six months based on the governor's executive orders 19189 and 20106 establishing Hurricane Dorian state of emergency. The final plat is consistent with the prelim plat as required by Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 3, Subdivisions, Division 5, Plat, Section 34171 definition. Staff recommends approval of the Brookshire subdivision as consistent with all requirements of Section 34173, requiring conformity to the approved prelim plat, the plating requirements of Chapter 177 Florida statute, the city's comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. A staff report and supporting documents as well as copies of the required covenants and performance bonds are part of your packet. Ms. Busaka and Mandy Lamoth are here to answer questions, and I believe they've got a few items that they would like to discuss with you. And present is the Mylar, which is seated right next to Ms. Busaka.
I mention this because this is required by statute that the Mylar be here. So I want to let everyone know that it's here, and if you would like to look at it, you are certainly welcome to.
And again, it's quasi-judicial. I read those rules earlier and hours ago. I just want to remind you of those and the disclosure requirements. If ex parte, we'll first have an applicant rebuttal and follow that process.
Should we give you anything we have as far as our clearing the table now? Quasi-judicial?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would. I would just say that I do have some correspondence here from misreceivers that I have gone over, but no, it didn't affect my opinion.
I've got the same probably correspondence as well, packet of information. So I can make it available if the applicant wants to see it.
I have the same packet that I can make available.
Now, I believe the applicant has been provided that. Ex parte communications is part of the record.
Okay.
I would say.
The record for the file.
Me, too, and I'm sure Mr. Robinson. I also drove through it the other day just because I was curious.
Okay, and then the opinion formed, you would disclose.
Yes, I read the complete, read it twice.
You serious? All right. All right, so we're ready to, oh, first of all, Counsel, you have anything? All right, applicant? Guys, it's been a long time.
Oh, it feels good to stand up.
There you go.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, fellow commissioners, for the record, my name is Brent Spain. I'm an attorney, Laney's attorney with Theriak in Spain, 1809 Edgewater Drive, Orlando, Florida. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner and the applicant, Stanley Martin Homes LLC. I'm not going to, I don't have a long-winded presentation. I don't have a fancy video. I'll say this. We support the staff's recommendation of approval, the analysis. I had the privilege of downloading your agenda packet, so I know there was over 250 pages of support and analysis, including from your outside environmental consultant confirming that the stormwater ponds meet the area of critical concern regulations. I just touch upon what the city manager indicated. This has been a process now four years going. We're very excited to be in the city of Tiesfeld and get going. As Commissioner Nelson had done the site visit, the initial site work is done. The roads are in, the dry lines are installed, the stormwater ponds are on the property. And the sketch plat, again, was approved back in 2018 by the city council. You had the preliminary plat in February of 2019, and then you had construction plans approved in August of 2021. So we would respectfully submit that the final plat before you is consistent with all three of those existing approvals. We have our entire development team here, including the owner's representative, if you all have any questions. But again, we thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Call the cards, please.
I have Rick Kern. The quasi, we have to do for and then against, correct?
Also, I didn't know if, you know, the staff had an opportunity to discuss your report and place it into evidence. It seems like.
I didn't know when the chairman wanted me to.
Because she would do that, and then we'd go into the applicant presentation. I see that that got skipped over, but I think.
Staff, you go first on everything, so whatever you want to do.
Yes, the staff needs to.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of how it's gone.
Then we'll do the applicant for.
If that ever happens again, it goes staff, read it, staff, whatever, and then I'll go into this other stuff. So I have to figure you guys were done.
The staff has provided a report, begins on page 454 of your agenda package. It describes the sketch plat and preliminary plat. The sketch plat for the subdivision was approved on January 9th, 2018 for 176 lots. The preliminary plat application was submitted on October 23rd, 2018 and approved on February 13th, 2019. This was for an amount of 166 lots, 10 lots less than the sketch plat approval. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat. It has been reviewed by the staff and the attorney. The performance bonds and the amount of 120% of the site construction costs. Guarantee installation of all required improvements is included in the agenda package. The final plat is consistent with the land development regulations, the comprehensive plan, and Chapter 177 Florida statutes. If you will go to your report on page 455, we discuss the specific requirements of the land development regulations and technical manuals and describe that all of these conditions are met. This is done on a case-by-case basis. In addition to that, we have reviewed it for conservation policy 1.1.4, 1.1.5, 1.6.1.2, and there are several others which are also included in your report. And the staff has found that the project is consistent with these comprehensive plan requirements. The area of critical concern, because this is within that area, is of special interest, and we have found that the plat is consistent with the infrastructure element policy 4.1.1, infrastructure element policy 5.2.4, the special district and overlay contained in Chapter 29 for the area of critical concern. In addition to that, the area of critical concern, performance standards contained in Chapter, I'm sorry, Section 32.07. I'd like to let you know that this, one of the reasons this review has taken so long is that on, after the sketch plat was approved and the preliminary plat was approved on May 28th, 2019, upon request of a citizen, the council approved a advisability to review and clarify Section 30-207 to determine if the elevation of the retention pond above 25 feet should be determined for your post-development. Ordinance number 27-2019 was adopted on October 22nd, 2019, based on the recommendations of the city's consulting hydrologist, BFA. I have a copy of that report, and that report does talk about the requirements that should be put into the code as it relates to maintaining the area of critical concern. On September 25th, 2020, Artiman and Associates also provided a review, and they completed groundwater modeling to analyze the impact of the proposed stormwater ponds on the recharge potential. They concluded that the stormwater system has been positioned to allow for maximum aquifer recharge and that the water storage in the superficial aquifer after a 100-year, 24-hour storm event in the post-development simulation is higher than the storage in the pre-development simulation. In addition to that, on October 1, 2020, the BFA also issued a review of Brookshire, concluding that the dry retention ponds proposed at Brookshire subdivision appear to be properly positioned and distributed to allow for potential superficial aquifer recharge and therefore should meet the intent of the city's AOCC ordinance. The report also concurs with the modeling showing the post-development pond configuration is sufficient performed by Artiman and Associates, and that the report states that the placement of fill soils within some of the proposed stormwater retention ponds increasing, actually increases the distance from the retention pond bottom to the water table by infilling, should increase evapo, I'm sorry, should decrease evapotranspiration losses and increase storage volume. As part of your report, you have received a copy of, not all, but the pertinent reviews by Universal Engineering, their ACC inspection reports, and these confirm that the soils at the bottom of the retention ponds have been correctly, are of correct material to pass the intent and requirements of the ordinance. I would bring your attention just to show you that these are not simply rubber stamps, that on 6/25/2021, there was an in-place density test report which showed that the soil materials did not pass the requirements. That test was redone after the soils were replaced and that on date 6/29/2021, they did pass. So that information is in your package beginning on page 564. There is also the declarations which have been reviewed by the county attorney and have been found to be consistent with the code and appropriate. The right-of-way maintenance agreement between the city and Brookshire is enclosed, as is the bonds for the infrastructure that has not yet been completed. There's an environmental services report, as unusually, you're not used to seeing this, but some of this has been redacted consistent with state law. So in summary, the staff does recommend that this is consistent with all of the requirements and that the plat should be approved.
Okay. City Manager, anything you want to add? All right, we are calling the cards still?
Rick Kern.
Thank you, Ms. Busaka. Very thorough.
Rick Kern with Honeycutt and Associates, 3700 U.S. Highway 1. I'm the engineer that did most of the design work in the project, and Peggy's documentation on it and description on it was very thorough and very accurate as well. I did want to spend just a couple minutes addressing the 18-page memo. I did want to spend just a couple minutes addressing the 18-page memo that you've received on the project already. One of the issues that was brought up was that the preliminary plat had a change from the sketch plat, one of the ponds moved. The reason for the move was the place where the pond was located at in the sketch plat turned out to be, we would have to cut 16 feet of dirt to make, to put the pond in that location, so. And that would exceed what's allowed in the city code, which is, you know, eight feet of cut only. So that was item one on the memo. Also, it was pointed out that on item two, that there were like about 27 lots that the perimeter buffer was in an easement and not in a tract, that's true. However, that's the way the sketch plat was approved by the city council, and that the change in the city code requiring it to be in tracks occurred after that approval of the sketch plat. And then also, on the clearing on the site, the code requires that we preserve 10% of the native vegetation on the site. We actually preserved 15%, and I've verified that with staff as well. And the hydrology report, I think Peggy did a very good job on that, basically the show that the ponds do, in post-development, recharge more water than the pre-development, and that ponds are positioned around the site properly to maximize the recharge on the project. And there are at least six ponds on the site. And if you have any further questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
You're fine. Any questions, council? I see none, thank you, sir. Call card.
Dwight Severs.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, Titusville. I want to make sure a part of the record is my correspondence to the mayor and council, and provided the copies to everyone, as well as my separate comments with the deed restrictions and the exhibits to be a part of the record. Any objection to that?
I have none.
Okay. As far as the ex parte, they are part of the file.
Let me get...
You provided that clerk for the file, is that correct? Those items were provided to you as part of the ex parte communications, as part of the file, is that correct?
I'll be glad to provide another copy. I would say, on the face of the record and the documents I have provided, it will clearly show, if you've read it, where this plat does not conform to the various ordinances of the city as such. I'm not, if, less than two minutes I have, I don't have any time to go over any of those, and that's the reason why I provided those all two in advance, so staff would have the information, so that you would have the information. I would like to stress a couple of items, I'll be happy to answer any question. I'd like to stress a couple of things. One, please do not approve the deed restrictions, or if you approve them, authorize the change to your code as presently in your draft comprehensive plan that would require looking at grasses in this area to be tolerant so that they are environmentally friendly, not St. Augustine grass. This subdivision, as constructed, is not family-friendly, is not environmentally friendly. It has no recreation area, no pocket parts, or anything. And as we all know, St. Augustine grass, which they are requiring to be irrigated and kept green and lovely, you have to use insecticides, pesticides, and a lot of fertilizer and water to make it survive on this desert, which is what the parcy currently looked at, looks like. So please make sure that's straightened out. Otherwise, as I indicated in my report, you're requiring another 40 million gallons of water to go on this area, to be spread to try to keep this grass alive. Secondly, as I point out, this...
Go ahead and finish that point.
Pardon?
Finish your secondly.
Okay, the second point, Section 30-332, 30-337 requires the natural buffer yards be set aside in separate tracks. There's no grandfather provision, grandfathering the previous sketch plat, which I'm sure none of you knew, that these natural retention areas were in an easement because you couldn't see, staff didn't point that out to you, staff objected to that.
All right, I think I got secondly. So I appreciate that, and again, we all have the packet, and I did take some time at it, and you got some good pictures in there as well, and maps.
Be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Member Stokel.
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is going to be hard to do probably for you, can you just, what is your biggest concern, is there something that the applicant could do that would, that you feel like it would meet the criteria? So I went through it, and I guess I'm just not sure what, what's your number one thing that you're concerned about most? Is it the ACC? Is it, like, what is...
Well, my number one thing is today where we're sitting, since the damage has already been done, and I'm being frank with you.
Okay.
Don't compound the problem by requiring St. Augustine grass. Did you see the article in the Florida Today newspaper yesterday, where there's a separate article saying the love for St. Augustine grass is on the way out because it requires so much watering, it's not environmentally friendly, and you, and we're putting all of this next to our wells. This makes no sense whatsoever.
So...
From the city's perspective, and if I was Sean Stauffer, I would, matter of fact, he supported the amendment, and I put the language of the amendment in my documents, he supported that in the change to the comprehensive plan. I don't know why he isn't up here stomping and asking you, "Please don't do this."
So...
It makes no sense.
Would, then, would that be your, like...
That's not my number one, because...
Is the grass.
I realize we are where we are.
Right.
I don't think we should have been here, but we are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah.
Member Nelson.
Right. You're right, we are where we are.
Yes, we are.
So, I understand the grass, grass, I think, probably is not going to be a big huge issue. What would be your second issue, what, if you were, had a magic wand and you could change something?
Considering we are where we are.
Right.
Again, I don't think there ever should have been that separate, large retention pond, because it doesn't need the express language of the code. You do have Mr. Barnes saying, but you cannot ignore the express language of the code. His report is a justification for a variance.
Correct, but I'm just saying, knowing where we are now, what would be your second suggestion?
Well, I do think the tracks, which are, should be required, if you don't require that, then the easement area identify some means and mechanism by which the homeowners' association or the property owner has to maintain that. What occurred here is a complete destruction of the native vegetation, that's what occurred.
You're talking about the buffers, having the HOA, which should be an easement.
Correct.
Have an HOA take care of it.
Right, and I would defer to council how to do that, because there's not even reference in the HOA documents what standard by which the buffers have to be maintained, or what plant material they have to be, you know, these were supposed to be native vegetation in the buffers.
Thank you.
And I realize there's a landscape plan, if that's the, if that's the criteria, then cross-reference in that the restrictions say these have to be maintained. But as staff readily pointed out, how is the homeowners' association going to maintain these buffer areas along the rear 20 feet on a privately-owned lot, even though there's an easement? It's a nightmare for the homeowners' association. So that would kind of be my, I'm just dealing with reality. I mean, I went out there, again, and, you know, there's trees that are leaning like that with dirt stacked up within four or five feet of the base of this pine tree, and the plat and the documents say there will have to be a well constructed around it at the time of the CO is issued on the property. Well, that might be six months, or that might be six years. In the meantime, all this is washing down, and that tree is going to die, for which they got credit for as mitigation for saving it. It is not going to live. It is not. And there's a lot of those little things...
Yeah.
...which are not addressed, and it's obvious it's a problem. It's obvious it's a problem.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, before we continue...
Yeah, well, I need a motion.
You hit your...
1110.
1115?
So we're going to have to do it again. Yeah, hit 1110.
1110?
Yeah.
Okay, 1110.
I got a motion, you got a second, all those in favor say yes. Opposed? You're going down on the record. All right, any other cards?
Laura Lee Thompson.
Oh, Laura Lee, I thought you went home.
I was all the way.
Oh, see, I thought you left. All right, hit her clock, here she goes.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue. And the grass is an issue, because right now, there's no reclaimed water that goes to this subdivision. So you have 170 homes, or 160, whatever, you have these homeowners that are going to be mandated to plant St. Augustine grass or a similar type of grass, which we all agree is horrible for the environment here in Florida.
Yes, you do.
And you're on top of our Area 2 well, which is where 50% of the consumptive use permit for the drinking water for the city comes from this area. And you're going to have 160 homeowners that are going to have to drill wells and suck water out of our aquifer. And the way that that aquifer works is you have a shallow lens of fresh water that sits on top of salt water. So when you're going to have 160 homes pulling water out of our aquifer to water their St. Augustine grass, you're going to be affecting the aquifer. And then, and as you pull water out of the aquifer, the salt water that's on both sides of it and underneath it comes up, and so you have a potential of, you know, doing the same thing that has happened to some of the other wells in the city, turn them to salt water. So for, if you don't do anything else, change the homeowner's manual and have them use Bahia grass, or, you know, I would say Bahia, but get rid of the St. Augustine, they're trying to get away from the use of St. Augustine grass in the state of Florida, because that is one of the worst things that has happened to the environment in Florida, because of the amount of water and the amount of fertilizer and the amount of pesticides that it takes to maintain a green, healthy lawn, I think is what the language is in the homeowner's covenants. It's wasteful. I mean, you're taking the rest of the city's drinking water so that people in this subdivision can water their lawns, it makes no sense. That's my, and I gave you those things, the green area, on the second page has the map legend, so that you can see how little of that green area there is, and the green area, it's generally excessively well or moderately well-drained soils with a seasonally high water tables below a depth of 40 inches, in case you can't read that. But basically, that's our aquifer recharge areas. And our Area 2 well field area is very, very small, it's basically just east of South Lake and between I-95 and South Lake, and only half the distance of South Lake, so it's not a very big area. And this is, this will be a huge impact on it, and I hope you can at least fix that in the homeowner's manual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cards?
Last card is St. Johnstone.
Need him.
Stan Johnson, I'm just going to say, as I'm concerned, what Mr. Severs and Laura Lee presented, thank you.
Thank you, Stan. That was the last card. Applicant, would you like to come back up, please?
Great, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, I'll keep it brief, I did want to just touch upon a couple of points. One, a housekeeping matter, since I sort of went out of order and before the staff, I did want to incorporate the agenda packet into the record, as well as the complete plat submittal with all the supporting documentations that our client has filed with the city. I wanted to clear up a couple of points. One, the buffer yard and the separate track, one, as touched upon, that was not a requirement when the sketch plat got approved, that was a later adopted amendment in the code, our plat, the preliminary plat, the sketch plat, the construction plans, all of which have been approved, have that. Also, I'd note that some of those easements are within larger tracks, I think one of the easements is in a stormwater track. Well, under the CCNRs, the declaration, the HOA is required to maintain that stormwater track, it's a common area. The CCNRs also prohibit any homeowner from making any alterations to a landscape area without the HOA's approval. So it would require board approval for one of those homeowners to alter the required landscape buffer. Obviously, that's not going to occur where the HOA board approves that. Additionally, the HOA documents that are in your packet as an exhibit authorize the HOA to maintain landscape berms within the neighborhood, so I wanted to clear that up. The comment regarding this one large pond, you all have the plat before you, but that's a misnomer that the project has just one stormwater pond, there are multiple ponds throughout the development, and again, the outside environmental consultant analyzed this to ensure that the ACC regs were met and complied with. The last couple of points I have, one, this, the remark regarding irrigation, it was mentioned in the agenda packet, our client has installed the purple dry lines, we're ready and willing to run reuse throughout the entire project once it's made available, so those lines are there, and the entire project will be irrigated with reuse once it becomes available. With regard to the well field location, you'll note on the plat, there's an impervious surface limitation on all the lots, that's specifically to meet the city's code requirement with regard to the location of the well field. And then lastly, with respect to the grass, I would just submit that there's nothing in the CCNRs that require or mandate that St. Augustine grass is used, or some other grass is used. In fact, if you read the provisions that were referenced in the 18-page submittal, they actually allow for flexibility, and they allow for Florida-friendly landscaping, and they provide that if St. John's or the city or... and they provide that if St. John's or the city or county regulations require a certain type of landscaping be installed, that the residents are required to comply with that. So again, I think that was a bit misleading in the sense that the suggestion that we mandated or require it. In fact, we defer to whatever the St. John's or the local government's code requirements are in their published regulations. So with that said, I'd echo the staff's analysis. They did a great job. They've been very thorough, as they should, on a project of this nature, and we appreciate your support this evening and look forward to being part of Titusville.
Uh, Member Nelson.
Okay, Mr. Spain. We have ten minutes before we have to get out of here. So can we say Bahia grass?
I'm, I'm getting a tentative yes. I will say this, just because I've practiced land use throughout the state of Florida. You know, there's sort of a misnumber with Bahia, Bahia, it, it takes less water, but then when the folks from up north come down to Florida and the Bahia browns, they get mad and they think, I'm not watering my grass enough. So they go over there and instead of the city saying, hey, you water on Tuesday and Thursday only, they sit there and they alter their irrigation system to run five days a week because they think the grass is turning brown when Bahia is supposed to naturally turn brown.
I, I would only say that, and, and I have to agree. I mean, it's, St. Augustine is, is starting to fade because of the amount of water it takes. I'm not nearly as familiar with the pesticides and the fertilizer, but I do know that you, you, you get St. Augustine in there, you've got to soak that up. I live in a very, I'll call it very average area, um, and people who are redoing their lawns are no longer bringing the St. Augustine in, and that kind of surprised me. It's just kind of a thing that's new. So I think that's kind of a big deal to get away from that. I think that would be really nice if we could start doing that a lot of places. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I love St. Augustine, very true, but it takes way too much water.
It's, it's, you gotta flood it.
And you gotta flood it. Um, but I don't, I don't want us to mandate that you have to use St. Augustine. I am kind of, I thought, and I guess I have to allude to you, um, when it comes down to our reclaimed water, we don't have, if I remember, maybe a year ago, we talked about the access to clean water in the area, and we really don't have the capacity, I don't think.
It's not there yet, but the capacity study's almost complete, Peggy, I think? Yep.
But I, I, I guess it still won't make a difference because you're still going to have to use water. And, you know, it is an area of critical concern as far as the water's concerned. But I just don't want to say it's mandatory that you have to do it. It does look better than Bahia. I actually have industrial area, I got Bahia on one, and I've got St. Augustine on the other, and I'm watering the St. Augustine. I've never watered up at here. So it, it is a big difference for sure.
Harder to mow, too.
It is very hard to mow.
Very hard to mow.
Yeah, but, you know, it is what it is.
Just call that direct.
Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Uh, Member Nelson?
So, I gotta tell you, I ha, I have to disagree with you. On grass, I mean, to me, rather than turn around and using lots of water, right now we don't have reclaimed water. I can vote for it, but I, I would say, I can vote for it with Bahia.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was just sitting there thinking about a statement.
Tell you what, what you're saying there.
Um, Member Stokoe, sorry, Vice Mayor.
So I, I guess maybe a question for staff. So if they put in Bahia and then somebody wants to change their grass, what happens? And it's something other than Bahia?
Well, if it's a code, i, if it is a deed restriction, the city does not enforce deed restrictions.
Right.
So that, if, if you want something that the city can enforce, um. I mean, we don't enforce deed restrictions.
Yeah, that's what I.
And as Mr. Spain mentioned, the, the deed restrictions do not require that. Now, my experience is, um, people put in what lives, and if it's not going to live there, then my guess is maybe the first subdivision, maybe the first house will go in there, but the second one won't because the grass just won't live. However, uh, we do not enforce deed restrictions, and it is not required in the code.
Yeah.
That's a very good point, Member Stokoe, because, um, if you go down to Home Depot, as much as I'm talking about the new lawns that I'm seeing put in are, are not St. Augustine, you go down to Home Depot or Lowe's and you pick up your Sajd squares, you're going to get St. Augustine. At least, that's mostly what I see. I probably have both. But, uh, St. Augustine's flying out of there, so I don't know how you would control that.
I mean, I guess we can make a recommendation, but I just don't foresee us being able to say, you guys must put in this grass and we catch you. That's where I have a hard time.
I, I do have one other question. Are you going to call me?
Uh, there's another light up here now. Uh, before we go any further, um, let's go to eleven twenty and then be done.
Oh, my gosh.
Go ahead.
So.
Wait, 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 say eleven twenty.
Oh, eleven twenty.
Yeah, I need a second. Uh, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we go to eleven twenty. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I get to talk. No, I, I know, I, I just need to understand, this development is being, um, the houses are being constructed by multiple or you all are building all?
Yeah, they're the builder.
There's one builder?
Yeah.
For all the, the houses. So whatever they put in, one, they're going to put in all. You have to. You gotta be consistent, sure. Correct, as far as the grass is concerned?
And I can have the, the owner's representative speak to that. I mean, typically, there's an upgrade package to landscaping. I did want to comment on the Commissioner's point that if this board in the future were to adopt regulations, there is a provision in the, in the CCNRs to say if the city or county code or St. John's regulations require Bahia grass in the rear yards, it shall remain as Bahia, and if it dies, may only be replaced with Bahia. So again, that's not a city enforcement. I mean, you guys probably have a provision that straight up says we don't enforce covenants and restrictions, but it would be an HOA enforcement issue.
All right. Uh, Member Robinson?
Did we, um, uh, did we come to the conclusion that we're going to do Bahia?
I, I think I had my claim. It's not that they've been willing to do it.
Because, uh, as, as, uh, Peggy just stated, it, 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 we can ask, we can go spend another twenty minutes talking about grass, but we can't. You know, you can, you can say, well, you'll do it, you'll do it, and then you go back and talk to all of the players to be, and we can't enforce it. So, well, why, why are we, what, what, what's the point of, of what, what we're doing? You know, we, we know that there is a, there is a possible issue with water shortage and the amount of water that Bahia, but, you know, that, uh, we know that, uh, people don't give a hoot when it comes to the beauty of their house and water that comes out of the ground till they don't have any more water coming out of the ground. So we're sitting here talking about that, and, and, and you, your company and every developer is in the business of making money, and you're going to do whatever it takes to make the most amount of money for the people that you're selling to. Then we're going to, I mean, we, we, if, if you, uh, can, it's nice. Do Bahia. You know, it, it's a water conservation, but there's no point in us sitting here and arguing with it.
I agree.
That is the point.
I, I think your message has been received and, you know, we, we understand the grass preference.
I, I think clearly, yeah, we, I think most of us have spoken that Bahia is more environmentally friendly, less water need, but at the same time, I think the point's been, been made that I like to say, I don't like to make rules I can't enforce. And I, I think that gets real tricky, and like I said, you can put Bahia in, and then the next good thing you know, this guy's got his truck down at, uh, Home Depot with getting the St. Augustine, and we gotta go back out there and check his backyard. So I, I'm all for Bahia. I'm not so sure I'm in for trying to enforce it.
I'm a Bahia fan, but I have St. Augustine in my yard.
Yeah, I'm ready for you. Okay, uh, with that, um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much. This is going to be the last thing we do tonight, I hope. Um, just to remind the council, Peggy said explicitly, I wrote it down, um, this final plat is consistent with all requirements. I heard those words. But with that being said, I move that we approve the final plat and covenants and acceptance of easements and performance bonds for Brookshire subdivision.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
As is unanimously. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. It's getting late. Uh, let's see where we're at now. Uh, petitions and petitions and requests for anybody? They're leaving me. Petitions and requests for anybody who hasn't spoken? Has everybody spoken? Okay. Nathan, you speak already? You good? Okay, um, this better be quick. Uh, let's go around the, the table. Anybody have anything they want to say? Yes, sir. You? No, he's not allowed to talk. Member Stokoe, you have anything? Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, and I've talked a little bit with staff about this, but I think that this council is being asked to make decisions on way too many things as it relates to CUPs and other things, once we have had approval. And I would ask that we, given the visibility to staff, for them to look at our process, look at specifically CUPs, look at some of our zoning on districts to see how we can make things easier, uh, to get through.
Let me, I could have swore we talked about that before because of somebody who was in front of us tonight even. And I can't remember what happened there because I remember thinking, why do we have to keep having these same people come back over and over when this happened tonight?
Yes.
And I don't remember why we couldn't figure that out.
I rem, the, the issue that came up before was when the Methodist Church had had a childcare for thirty years, and then they ceased it, and so the CUP expired. There are communities that, in which CUPs do not expire, so one of the issues could be that staff brings that back to you as an option. But we're happy to look at CUP.
Okay, I, I, let me just get specific then. Tonight, we had Mr. Wright in front of us, and I know it was a different deal here, but it seems like we do a lot of CUPs with this particular thing a lot.
Yes, and, and we, uh, staff is totally prepared to bring back to you some recommendations for eliminating several CUPs.
Because every time I see him, it's almost, and I, and I appreciate his effort, I love the video, I love the project, but I, I, like, I saw him out there, it's like, you know, you're back again.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever seen anybody that many times.
And, and this would just be preliminary, of course.
I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about or not.
Of ordinance change, but we would be delighted to bring you back some recommendations.
I like that. I was thinking more specifically about the one thing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's one thing, but that the whole idea in my mind is, and, and I use the example of, you've got president, you've got the legislators and senators and all that, senators, legislators, council, we make the rules, then we tell the president, city manager, go enforce those things, get it done. But it just seems like every time you look around, because I don't believe staff is feeling comfortable or feel that the process allows them to make some decisions that they should be able to make without coming down. They're the experts, we're not the expert, and we should just look at our processes to make sure that there aren't anything in there that could make the process a lot easier or quicker, uh, to get things done.
Have we had more come to us lately? Um, because it seems like we do, and I'm not sure if, if that's just because we've got more going on.
You are absolutely right. The easy part, the easy projects are done, and there is nothing left in the city except redevelopment.
Because this has seemed like a hard last year.
Yes, sir. It, it has, and that is because the easy projects are done and the lands that are left are marginal or have a budding neighbors that don't want that use. There, this is going to continue, I'm afraid.
And Mayor, um, I, you know, we update you on the number of projects that we have by our GP, G I, G I S. This morning, there's forty-four projects. Um, you, you know, six years ago when you came on council, there was seven, so.
Well, I, I was going to say, I was going to say to you two, do you remember two thousand sixteen, how chilled it was up here? And then, and everybody wasn't mad at everybody, and we, oh my goodness gracious, life is different. Welcome to being the mayor. Yeah. So, um.
And, and the nature of the properties that are left, as Peggy has talked about, are challenging. So we are taking a look also at redevelopment, how to make redevelopment, uh, a little easier because that's, that's what's next.
Well, then the play off of Robert, uh, Vice Mayor's point, excuse me, and, and I apologize. This, maybe that's a really good timing thing because maybe this seems like it's coming to us all the time, but maybe because there's so many more. If there's a way to do, as he noted, you guys just handle it, boy, that would, we've got a lot of those things.
Now, I, I will tell you, um, because of the nature of what's left and redevelopment's on the way, you're not going to see forty-two projects probably like this for a while. I mean, we're going to work through these, but I, I think those numbers are going to go down.
Good, good call there, Vice Mayor. I think that's awesome. Uh, anybody else?
Well, I do have a question. I understand that other cities, the sketch plats don't count as.
I, I would be so delighted to show you. I have spent a lot of time actually comparing the requirements of other cities when it comes to sketch plat and preliminary plat. And I would be delighted to show you that, and then after you see it, we, uh, if you'd like to have a discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion.
Of course.
About it, because I think that's probably part of what got us in this pickle.
I, that's, I, I thought that too until I did some research, so, uh, but it's a good, but I do have the information, and as soon as we get a, um, meeting where we're not swamped, I'll make sure that that becomes available.
I'm positive that'd be after September, as Mr. Stokoe is.
And I gotta say, thank you to you guys for letting me.
That was nice. That was nice.
You got that. Six connect.
Well, they called me this afternoon. They called me, called Amy. They were trying to find, uh, Willie. They couldn't get hold of Willie.
That's awesome.
And then they called me, and I mean, I was like, you know.
Yeah, Willie's like a poor son to me. He's not kidding, Willie, he's ripped his butt. He's a great young man, had a great dad, too. Not me, his real dad. Sir?
You know what I would like to see?
Uh-oh.
You know that every four to, two to four years, there's a turnover in city council? And of course, there's going to be businessmen and women, then developers coming in throughout the years. People are going to be buying and selling land. But once you find, get something and you set variances over it, make it a little bit more difficult and go back and do the history and the study of why it was set up that way from the beginning, so you won't have to get down the road after the land, as the land has switched hands two or three times, and one developer wanted to make it more valuable for the next developer, and the next developer wanted to make it more valuable. And you, you find that if there is, at max, six years consistency with the decisions that the council makes sometimes, at max. And then they come back and they find out, if the research is not done upfront on the why is behind decisions or met, why behind the decision is made, then down the road, that why is going to go down the tube, and we're going to end up where we are today out at Brookshire. Yes, there was some things and some decisions, probably as I read all of that stuff, which Peggy advised me to keep my nose out of. There was some decisions that was made in that process that you, you would, you could already identify that we were going to be where we are tonight. You could identify. So, you know, that the staff does what they, they can do to give you as much history to give you the why, but until we start listening better, maybe that, you know, we need to do it.
We're all feeling the stress of all these things coming in front of us because, again, it's a different world than when we got here in sixteen.
And I'm sticking to it.
And I appreciate that, but we're two minutes over, so we're in trouble. You want to go real quick?
Yeah, right quick.
Yeah, right quick, um, I don't know if you saw the article in the, in the paper about a, a council member in Cocoa wanted to, uh, look at an ordinance to require a rental company, um, to, uh, give a less, be, uh, a couple of months if they're gonna increase, uh, their rent. And I was wondering, is that something legal? Is that something that could, it's not, why you shaking? I'm asking because, because I don't know.
I, I can't comment, because I didn't read the article, and I'm not sure of the language of what they're doing. So I would not feel comfortable commenting on that.
Okay, well, would you look into that and see if that's something? Because to me, it, 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 in my mind, it had a little promise, because of all the stuff that's going on, um, with the rent and all this good stuff, and it's getting out of hand, for sure. Houses, of course, are getting out of hand. If we can do something as a council, I certainly would like to do it. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
All right, I had a lot of things to say, but because, uh, Member Jordan talked twice after he voted no to extend the time twice, I am going to, and by saying that, uh, for the first time, uh, in my tenure, I will not be at the meeting next time. Member Jordan will run it, and if he says no...
It's my birthday next meeting.
Well, I can't come back for that, but...
She's still under forty.
I bet you guys will be out of here before eleven thirty.
I guarantee it.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna hear it, Mr. No Vote, keep talking. City manager?
No, nothing to report, sir.
City attorney? All right, till we meet again, Vice Mayor Jordan, don't mess up.